Awesome. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The Board of Education is meeting electronically due to, it's actually the Bering County Commissioner's Emergency Order which lasts through June 30th, so we'll have to get that updated. The public may participate in the meeting by joining the Zoom link listed above. Board members may be contacted through the emails listed below. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Upon prior request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. Requests for special assistance may be sent to liz.goodwin@bhs.org rather. I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you all can unmute and say it with me, I would appreciate that. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. We are going to next have our roll call. Secretary Triplet, can you please call for attendance?
President Robinson.
Present.
Vice President Bradley.
Present.
Secretary Triplet, present. Treasure Creighton.
Present.
Trustee Barnes.
Present.
Trustee Buchanan.
Present.
Trustee Rocket.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next, prior to the actual business, we wanted to take a moment of silence. And so I am going to actually pass the mic over to Secretary Triplet, who is going to lead us in that.
Evening, everybody. Our community has been going through a lot of tragedy, a lot of turmoil, a lot of death, and not only just our community, but those of us, some of us who are on the Board of Education and in our central administration office has had deaths in their families. And so we just want to take this opportunity to take a moment of silence. And in that moment of silence, let us petition our higher powers to ask that he continues to bless and bring peace over our community, our district, and all the people in our community who are suffering at this time. So we can begin the moment of silence starting now. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet. Next, we wanted to do an acknowledgement for Teacher Appreciation Week, National Appreciation Week. This week has been nationally dedicated to the acknowledgement of the endeavors of teachers, and today specifically is National Teacher Appreciation Day in the United States. The Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education wishes to acknowledge the dedicated educators in our district, as well as the mighty Tigers who have committed their lives to serving as educators in other districts throughout the nation. Each of us have been impacted by the diligence of an amazing educator. We wish to honor your lasting contributions as teachers play an important role in shaping the lives of children who will lead our future. In this moment, we express our gratitude by saying thank you for your patience, dedication, and commitment. We not only appreciate you today, but every day. Happy National Teacher Appreciation Day and Week. So thank you all. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I make the motion to approve the agenda. Agenda, I'm sorry.
Is there a second or support?
I support.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the current agenda? Hearing none. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll for the agenda?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasure Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan. Trustee Rocket Barton.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The approval has been approved, the agenda has been approved. Next, we have public comment on agenda items. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak, public comment on agenda items, and open public comment. Per Policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz.goodwin@bhs.org. Is there anyone on the line currently for public comment on agenda items?
Where are the agenda items?
They are on the screen. Do you have, are you on a cell commissioner app or a computer?
I'm on my, I'm on my cell, but I see them, but I didn't, I could not move the screen.
Okay. So Liz, can you just do a quick scroll?
I just need to make a comment because I may not be able to stay for the duration.
Okay, you have the floor, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. My name is Commissioner Mary Alice Adams. I would just like to say that with the city getting ready for its master plan, and I've been hearing a lot of noise about, and it's, it's noise that we need to hear about land and zoning. As Benton Harbor prepares to do an update its master plan, I would ask, please, 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 hold on to and possess the land until a master plan is put together. I think that it will serve us a great deal of prosperity in the near future if we do so, but out of respect for the taxpayers, the city of Benton Harbor residents, please hold on to and possess the land and, and, and hold off any sales that may be in the works. I'm begging, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, for your comment. Is there anyone else for public comment on agenda items?
Yeah, I would like to say something if you hear me.
I can hear you, sir. May I ask who's speaking?
Yeah, my name, my name is Ricky Hill.
You have the floor, Mr. Hill.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board and, you know, Madam President, you know, because I was a city commissioner for like 16 years, so I understand being in those seats, you know, is difficult at times and pleasurable at times. I do understand that, you know. But I also would, just, just let me do a follow-up on Commissioner Adams. Because one of the mistakes I think that we made, you know, and this is my opinion, I think that we made as commissioners was getting rid of our property too soon, some of it. Some of it I don't have regrets because it had to be developed, nothing from nothing, leave nothing. But it is imperative that, you know, you, that the board do consider not selling the land so fast, and here's the reason why. If, if, only in Hawaii is the volcano was making land. Land is the most valuable thing, the most valuable thing that we could own because it's not being made unless you're in Hawaii and the volcano was erupting, then they, it increases the land on, on the island, but we not there. So the, and the land is not being rebuilt to nowhere. So it's imperative, in my opinion, that you hold on to the land. Don't be hasty, you know, don't be hasty. And it's, it's part of, the people who want the land understand that. They understand that, they understand that, you know, that we don't have a lot of money to really buy our own property. So people came in to buy the property who don't even live in the area, you know. And so it's really, once again, should not be a hasty move, you know, to, to sell our property. And it is our property, you know. See, so please, just take time, think about it, you know, talk to the residents because we are the ones who voted the school board in, you know, just like they voted me in as city commissioner, and I had to listen to the residents. So I understand, once again, where you all at, you know, because I was on the city commissioner for 16 years. So there's something to consider, something to consider is, is no intimidation, no just a suggestion. That's what it is, suggestion. So I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there any, is there anyone else on the line for public comment or on agenda items?
Can you hear me?
I can. Ms. Gavin, you have the floor.
Okay. I want to thank you so much. Didn't really have, like, prepared speech or anything. We've been here a few times, and we've done a full one-hour town hall, and I'm very grateful to Madam President and to the school board members and the commissioner who attended as well. I had a very difficult mediation one night, and after I got off that mediation, I realized that my child had sent me probably seven or eight messages of love, just telling me how much he loved me, how much he supported me, you know, and how much I meant to him, and telling me that he was my everything. And it just kind of reminded me of where we are right now. We're in a space where you all have been in very difficult mediations with organizations that may not have our best interests at heart, or that may not understand how valuable we are. And we are on the sidelines doing our best to communicate to you how important this district is to us, how much we love it, how much we want you to take a chance with us and give us an opportunity to cultivate the land together regardless of personal feelings, but just really coming together as a community, and this is a unique opportunity to do that. We laid out the case for that, and the biggest problem that we've had in Benton Harbor is inaction. The biggest problem that we've had is while others are strategizing against us and strategizing to take what is ours, we haven't moved in the direction for ourselves, for our people. And right now, you know, documentation beats conversation, and there may be some people on the board who are saying, I will not sell the land, but right now, that last vote was a vote to get rid of your, half of your land and demolish buildings. And so what we're asking as you're considering in these discussions is to move right now and vote yes today so that we can keep the land, voting yes for the Black Wall Street Zone Resolution, and ensuring that the superintendent's office fills out the short application so that we can rezone the land, keep the land, attract the dollars, and allow us to do what we know is best for our community that we are vested in. And I will turn, turn the call back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Gavin, or Ms. Gavin. Is there anyone else on the line for public comment on agenda items?
Me.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
I just want to say that, well, we need to say yes, vote yes, because I think we should keep the high school open and to ourselves because we have been through tough times for centuries now, and it's just time to go back to peace and vote yes for Black Wall Street Zone Resolution and just stop the land grabs and keep our streets and everything open.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Hearing, oh, go ahead.
Kim Jorgensen game is Heather hand raised.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet. I appreciate my secretary. Go ahead, Kim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. I was trying to unmute, and I didn't seem to be able to make that happen, so. I just want to say as a supporter, I do not live in the city of Benton Harbor, but I have lived here my whole life, and I certainly have a vested interest in our region and in the sustainability of our region. You know, I have a deep awareness that the segregation that we have here and the resulting disparity, because that's how communities of color experience disinvestment and disenfranchisement is through segregation, that it isn't good for any of us, and that it hurts all of us, and that it hurts our, the stability of our region, and it hurts the sustainability of our region. And I just would really love to see Benton Harbor thrive. And right now, there are a whole lot of properties within the city of Benton Harbor that are owned by developers that are just being sat on until they get what they want. They're willing to sit and let the city die and just sit on that property because they know they'll make zillions of dollars later when they do start to develop it in the ways that they want to develop it. And what I would really love to see is for our region to benefit from the beauty that Benton Harbor can grow when its citizens are involved in that process. And when we have developers sitting on property who weren't born here, who didn't grow up here, who have only a financial interest in this community, if we allow them to just sit on property and not see it flourish, then that's, that's just such a loss. And I feel like unless, unless the people of Benton Harbor retain some control of the properties where they can, then those developers are going to come in and they're going to make decisions for us and for you. And I don't want that to happen. I want to see the beautiful community that I know we can have together. So that's my interest, and that's my hope. And I want you all to know that I have a deep love and support for the community, and that's why I wanted to be here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen Gang. I see Mr. Haywood's hand raised for public comment on agenda items.
Yes, can you all hear me?
I can hear you barely.
Can you all hear me now?
A little bit better. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Let's go back to 1997.
I can't, I can't hear him, Madam President. He needs to get closer to the mic or turn it, turn it up.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
It's, it's a lot more faint than what you usually are.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Little bit better.
Hold up just a second. Can you hear me? I got the, I got it up now. Can you hear me a little bit better?
Just a smidge. If you could speak a little louder, we probably could hear you better.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Let's go back to 1997. They came to the city of Benton Harbor talking about diversity and inclusion. At that particular time, we had our skills center, we had our tech center, we had everything that every other district had. And mind you, they talked about diversity and inclusion. Since that particular time, they closed down the skills center, they closed down the tech center, they removed all the classes and things that were very valuable to the development of our youth here in the community of Benton Harbor, Michigan. Everybody that has the mindset of dealing with reality, understand what is at stake here when it comes to the city of Benton Harbor. And we have to understand and choose what side we're going to really stand on when it comes to this community and the education of our children. Cornerstone Alliance came with a plan to downsize the district and wanted you to downsize. We have to ask the question, why? Why would an entity put forth a plan to help you downsize your community? When they had those individuals that partnered with Whirlpool and Lakeland, we were in a worse position than we was had we not partnered with them. They had goals that could not be reached. And when you talk about this district, there has been things that has been done strategically to disenfranchise our children. And as a lot of our people have said on this line, when you talk about selling a property, they rezoned the high school. I saw the map, and they know that I saw the map. This, it was a map without the high school. Calvin Britain was sold, and as Ms. Gang spoke on, they sitting on the property right now because all of that area over there had been redeveloped from the high school all the way down to the riverfront. There was no high school there, and they shouldn't have ever sold where the harbor flats is at now, but a mayor came in and he sold that property to some people so that our children could continue to be in this space that we're in right now. So when we talk about the Black Wall Street Zone and those things which were in it, those were the facts. And as you can see from the dates that were in that town hall, everything was done strategically. And it is imperative right now that we possess and save this land. When you talk about people having a vested interest in this land, I've, I've wrote a couple people, you know, and I got dates that I've sent emails to people in the district, and I have not got no response because the majority of people that's in positions are not from this district and don't understand the great history that has happened here in this district. It used to be a time where people from other areas would come to go to school here. Everybody remember that when they were shipped in because we had everything that other districts wanted to have. Now we have nothing. And how is it that Niles, Alclere, Coloma, every school is functioning but the city of Benton Harbor? And it wasn't because of bad mismanagement because the debt was not created by people that was in the district because I was working as a parent pro in the district. When we had our own human resource office, when we had our own transportation services, I remember when they began to outsource, outsource. How would you sustain a community if you outsourcing everything? So as we move forward, we have to vote this evening and have a resolution put forth that will protect this land and this property because we dealing with reality. And I say that because you have to really understand.
Mr. Haywood.
Have tiger pride. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I, my apologies, I didn't notice right, right away that your time had ran out, but I do appreciate your comment. Thank you so much. I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Is there anyone else on the line for public comment on agenda items? If not, we'll move forward. All right. Thank you, everyone, for all of your feedback. We really appreciate and value your insights provided this evening. Next, on the agenda, we have review of the meeting minutes because this is our work session. We're not actually voting on them this evening, but we are taking an opportunity to discuss and review to see if there's any edits or corrections. So is there any comments or concerns or clarifications needed regarding the minutes for work session for 1321 or regular session for 2021? Okay. Any, go ahead, Secretary Triplet.
No, did I, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. So if the board finds, we will be voting to approve the minutes from 413 and 420 next week. So if you, in going through your agenda and doing your research in preparation for next week's vote, see that there are clarifications or things that we do need to adjust, feel free to shoot an email to Liz, and we'll see if we can get those adjustments made. So we are going to move forward with board business, and we just wanted to get started, or I wanted to get started with the official business today with review of our board norms. So if I can get those pulled up.
President Robinson.
Yes, Secretary Triplet.
As I'm looking at the agenda, it looked like it being some adjustments made to the agenda. I don't think anything should be, any changes should be made to the agenda once we've approved it. So like some activity on here, and I'm not clear as to what adjustments are being made and to why, as to why.
Okay. Liz, is there, have you made any updates to the agenda? Liz is who has access right now.
I'm in reference, did you know what you're referring to, Mr. Secretary Triplet?
Well, it looks like. Okay, well, if there's nothing.
No, no, the only, there was adjustments this afternoon, but there's nothing since the meeting has started. So the agenda is as it is presented right now.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Can you pull up? Okay. So our Board of Education norms, we will treat each other with respect, we will listen to learn, we will refrain from side conversations, we will use our time wisely, starting and ending our meetings on time, we will challenge ideas, not people, we will ask questions when in doubt, there will be no surprises at the board table, we will practice the seven norms of collaboration. And then if you could scroll down to our norms, our seven norms. The norms of collaboration are pausing, paraphrasing, posing questions, putting ideas on the table, providing data, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive intentions. And those are the norms that we utilize at the board table when interacting with each other and the community. We also ask that the community utilize those norms when interacting with us as well. So I just wanted to do a quick review of those before we get started with our business. Next up on our agenda is committee reports, and the first report that is listed is curriculum. So I will pass the mic over to Secretary Triplet for your update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to go through and give you the items that were actually discussed at our meeting that we had this past week. Special education gave us an update as it related to, a good report, a celebration was held, and that the goal for that department is to definitely not have any more, or any more violations that go unaddressed in a timely manner. It also talked about pre-K EC signatures from the board president and the superintendent. Some of these things will be discussed, I think, as Dr. Shelton speaks, talked about school accountability, the yearly state assessment. the yearly state assessment discussion, um, where we talked about the concerns that were had, um, as they related to the M step and the, um, lack of information um, or people not knowing that this was happening and how we were moving and basically, um, had a discussion about how we could do better, um, how the, uh, teaching and learning division could do better in that area. Um, there were no items for approval and that was basically what was discussed at the, uh, curriculum meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Uh, anyone have any questions for Secretary Triplett? If not, we'll proceed to facilities. All right, Vice President Bradley, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is well. Uh, we had a brief meeting um, for facilities and the only major thing we had on the, um, agenda for that meeting was that we, uh, discussed the, um, Martin Luther King, um, school barrier installation in front of the school because of that, um, we had two people kind of back to back in a few months span running to one of the classrooms and that was one of the biggest, uh, issues that we want to deal with. We discussed the cost of that. So that was probably the only thing that we had, uh, discussed on that. And that's all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bradley. Are there any questions for him? If not, we'll proceed to.
I, I have a small question, President Robinson.
Go ahead, uh, Treasurer Creighton.
I just wonder, um, I heard a lot about, um, talking about the selling of land. And I wasn't sure, I'm not really sure, um, what, you know, what the individuals were talking about. Um, and so I just wonder, was that something that was discussed in the committee meeting? Is it something that was discussed at a previous meeting that I missed or? Um, I'm, I'm not really sure what that conversation is the public was speaking about. And so I just wonder, is that something that's on the floor or?
So now the last, the last update that we had was the, I think we actually brought to the board meeting was the cancellation of a sale of a property. So there's no, um, there was no discussion at our most recent meeting regarding, uh, the sale of particular properties. I think it's just part of the conversation in knowing that, you know, the Community Engagement Advisory Committee made recommendations that we, um, look at downsizing some of the properties that we have. And so I think it's just that general conversation piece. Um, but right now there, there was no particular, uh, conversation in the most recent meeting about particular properties.
I have.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, like, um, just as to Vice President Bradley. I know that at the last meeting, we moved quickly, um, upon, um, identifying, um, contracts for the, um, grass and lawn and the upkeep. And, um, I've never had the opportunity or as a board, I've never seen the director or person from the facilities to present even to the board or to the community. Um, I, um, went around, had the opportunity to go around once that contract was, we voted to, um, accept that contract. Um, I had an opportunity to go around, um, to some of the facilities. And my question was, in that contract, um, first of all, is there any way that we can see the contract that we voted on? Um, and what the contracts entail? And also, I, I guess I wanna ask the question of who is actually inspecting what we expect as it relates to facilities and what have, because I have a lot of concerns. I went to, um, some of the, um, facility, some of the district property that had been, um, cut or, or worked and I was, um, very concerned with some of the things that I saw. Um, and so I think one thing that as a Board of Education, I think that we have to start getting in the mode on of, of, um, when we're reporting back from, from, from our various committees that we need more detailed and informed reports. Because what I saw was, um, was concerning in some areas. And, um, I don't want to have any surprises at the board table. So before we have our meeting next week, I will be communicating, um, some of my concerns, um, some calls that I have received. Um, just, you know, um, that's very concerning. So I guess my, my question is, um, when are we going to as a board meet the director of facilities? And, um, when are they gonna come to a board meeting so we can know who they are? And, um, um, why aren't they on, you know, as some of the administrators are on this particular meeting so the community can know? Because I too was concerned, not concerned. Um, I too had some questions when I started hearing them talking about the sales of properties. I, 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 I do not know anything about any sales. I haven't heard anything about any sales. So thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Townsend, do you wanna speak to Mr. Weber? In board meeting?
Yes, members that come to the Board of Education meeting, our members that are executive cabinet members. Um, so as you can see, everyone that present are chiefs, but we don't have any director level individuals at board meetings on a regular basis. Um, it's not a requirement. Um, as presentations come up that they may need to present, we do extend that invitation. So for example, last week, we extended the invitation of our librarian. Um, but more than happy to address any concerns that the board have, um, about any expectations that we'd like to see met. Thank you.
And then also for, uh, Dr. Townsend and, and Miss, or Mr. Johnson, whichever would prefer to speak to. I just wanna ensure that I didn't, uh, misspeak as it relates to the current status of properties. Are there, Mr. Johnson, are there any properties currently listed for sale?
There are none that are owned by the Board of Education.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was, I know I'm not the chair. Um, but I am a member of that committee, so I, I like to ensure that I am providing accurate information. So thank you for providing that clarification to the board, um, as well as the community members, um, that think that there's current property listed for sale. So thank you.
M- Madam President?
Yes, go ahead, Secretary Triplett.
Well, I guess my question is, is there anyone from this particular committee or who will be responsible for inspecting the work and walking through to make sure that the work is done? Um, who's responsible for that?
Yeah, for clarity, facilities fall under our chief of, uh, Chief Finance Officer. Um, and yes, we do. I mean, as a matter of fact, I rode around our facilities today, um, after coming from out of town due to a family emergency. Um, and my expectation is, or my hope is that our facilities will be serviced this week. Uh, cause I do see the dandelions that grew up with all the rain. Um, but Director of Facilities respond to, or reports to our CFO. Thank you.
And Secretary Triplett, I know you specifically, if I'm not mistaken, you specifically noticed some concerns that you have, um, witnessed yourself or received. If you could get those put together in an email and get those sent out so we can ensure that those are things that we're actually checking into for you and getting clarified.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Next, um, if there's no other questions, we'll proceed to our finance committee report. Treasurer Creighton?
I'm sorry.
You muted yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I sure can.
Okay. In our own finance committee, we talked about military and we also talked about our monthly financial report. Uh, Mr. Johnson, the finance, the chief of finance, um, he, he really did some training with us on how to understand the reports. And, um, he actually added a column. Uh, and I think, um, if it has, if it hasn't been forwarded to the entire board, we'll make sure that the entire board gets it. I think it's some good information to understand the comparison between this year, this year's budget and last year, um. Board members had a lot of questions about, um, the CARES grant. I think some parents and community members also talked a lot about that. And so we learned, um, that with that, those funds, um, they're broken down into three ways thus far, the S R one, S R two, and S R three. Um, so far, we've received about three point two million dollars, uh, for the S R one. Um, I know that it was promised, I think someone said, um, according to that Mackinac Island report, that we were receiving like somewhere between forty seven and forty nine million. And although we're very hopeful for that, um, right now, we've, um, not received, and I don't wanna misquote, but I think we're somewhere around about ten million. Um, a little more, a little less, but, um, definitely not to that forty seven million yet. Um, and so we have received that, um, it has helped us tremendously. Um, get caught up on things, pay things, and not have to rely so much on, um, borrowing from one pot to pay or balance another one. So that, that has really helped us. Um, and as far as, um, I know some questions about, you know, how that money is budgeted, what are we doing with that money? And so basically, um, I too learned a lot about that. Um, I think a good, um, summary of that is that, you know, when we receive these monies, the federal government or the state of Michigan, or whomever the money is coming from, they, um, allot the money to us according to the plan when we apply to say this is what we're gonna use the money for. And then, um, as we actually get approved, we then petition, uh, MBE for approval of our actual budget. And so, um, MBE actually tells us what we can spend the money on and what we can't spend it on. And so, um, I don't wanna say it's micro managed, but there are systems in place to make sure we're doing what we said we were gonna do, um, with the money. And so, um, our finance department, um, has a lot of reports and, um, he made tables and everything to kinda show us what they're doing. Um, as he's trying to clean up the budget and make sure things, you know, are accurate. Um, talked about, um, making sure that internal processes are in place, so that things are accurate. And we're just not lumping everything into one and it's labeled miscellaneous and so things are itemized. And, um, he's committed with his department to make sure that we're, you know, constantly making changes and improvements so that we'll understand the public and understand, and all of our stakeholders will know that we're doing what we're supposed to do with the money. Um, we, we were really excited in that meeting. Uh, I can't remember, um, specifically on the numbers, but I know that things were looking good. Um, our superintendent was really excited that, you know, he's able to help lead that work and make sure that, you know, we're out of the red in certain areas. And he and his team is committed to, uh, making sure that we are climbing out of that, um, slowly but surely. And so, um, I think that was pretty much our meeting. Um, oh, and we also talked about the summer tax bill.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Are there any questions for Treasurer Creighton before she proceeds to her HR committee report?
Yes, uh, um, Treasurer Creighton, is there any way possible? And Mr. Johnson, is there any way possible what you guys have learned in that particular committee meeting? Um, is there any way possible this could be done, um, presented to the board in its entirety in a report? Um, at an open meeting so that the community will know the same things that you all learned in your committee meeting?
Oh, I think that's a, um, great idea. Mr. Johnson, um, or I guess Mr. Dr. Townsend, is that something that we could, um, do and put on the agenda for one of our next meetings?
Um, what's done in the committee is general, is, is general conversation. So I think, um, it, it's more of a, of unpacked version of what we get actually at a board meeting. A board meeting, we give all the reports, but, uh, we're more than happy to give any level of specificity with regards to what it is you're looking at, the tables that you see, uh, to make it as legible as possible. And, um, so our stakeholders can understand, um, our finances and our budgets. So, um, that's coming soon. As a matter of fact, we have an audit coming up. Um, and that's generally where all those breakdowns come. I think the committee is just getting, uh, the kind of week by week, day by day play. Uh, I don't think that's important for the board, but the reports are what's important. We kinda unpack and go real deep and all the heavy questions are answered.
Because my question wasn't asking, I guess my question from, 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 yes. I guess my question was simply this, from the things that you've heard and, and, and the way in which you presented the report. Those kind of things, uh, um, would, would, um, I'm not sure. Well, I, I think that the community, it can be put in a form where it wa, it was made clear, clarified to you that it could be made clarified to us and the, um, committee, because you said it was clarified, but we still don't know as a board what was actually clarified. So just like you learn things, we need to learn those same things along the way. That's all I was asking.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, may I respond to that?
Yes, you may, uh, you may respond, Treasurer Creighton, as, as a chair. Go ahead.
Um, I think, um, what Mr. Triplett and what Mr. Triplett, I think what I hear you saying is that, um, you would like for the finance department and or committee to provide a presentation, um, breaking down, um, the budget and or a report so that we can understand where finances, uh, what are we doing with our finances? The, the gains and the wins that we're making, um, as a district. I think that's a reasonable presentation that, um, can probably, um, take place. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that's something that we can definitely do and, um, Dr. Townsend, are you understanding what he asked?
Hopefully I am. I'm more than happy to about, um, offline, get more information. We do provide a monthly, uh, finance report, which is gonna be one presented today. Uh, where I think all that info, most of the information is that, uh, but I'm more than happy to, um, explore what additional information uh, we can share so we can get it out to everybody.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing, just like we, just like when you said that, you know, the forty seven million, but in actuality it's only ten million. So, you know, people will be up to speed and knowing exactly what it is. Stop saying forty seven million. And forty seven million is not the number or the amount that we have. And this is what we do have. And this is what we've done with it. So, yeah. Uh, we, we can do more offline. Thank you.
Copy that. And, and thank you for bringing that up. I think that's a good job that Ms. Creighton brought that up. That, I think her saying that was just, um, a way to just give clarity to some of the information that goes out in the press that says, hey, the district got forty seven million dollars. And people say, what are they doing with the money? And we're just saying, hey, no, we don't have that money. We hope to get that money. In fact, there's some other monies we still have not received. Um, so I think it's premature saying that the district have received that. Um, so that's really what we're trying to communicate is that we have not received forty seven or forty nine million dollars at all. Um, but we, if we, if we get it, we can't wait to get it so we can su, uh, successfully allocate those resources to support academic and student achievement. Um, but definitely look into hearing offline so we can get the needs met of our Board of Trustee members.
Thank you. I think one thing that might be helpful, uh, Treasurer Creighton is this month in our committee meeting, a lot of the clarifications that we get is because we specifically ask those questions in the meeting. So maybe we can kinda jot down what our questions are that, that you, I, and, uh, Vice President Bradley ask. And maybe, and get that as something separate that we can collaborate on presenting, um, and work with Mr. Johnson and Dr. Townsend on providing that information. So we'll work to get something together for, uh, the remainder of the board and the com, the community for, um, next month's meeting. So thank you, Secretary Triplett, for pointing out that clarification. And then just one thing, our conversation that we just had was seamless and it went great. But if we could ensure that we are kinda utilizing a one mic rule in allowing, um, each person to finish and then for me to pass the mic so that we don't, um, run into a situation where we're talking over each other, that would be awesome. Does anyone else have any questions for Treasurer Creighton? Or wait, did you have another?
Madam President?
Go ahead.
One thing that is a reservation, okay? Um, we also talked about the, um, P cards. And with those P cards, um, it, it'll provide our, um, CFO internal control. A P card is pretty much, um, what can I say? So, you know, last day we used to use purchase orders and I know some businesses still use those. Um, and then another thing that we do, we do credit cards. But the P card is a little more sophisticated. And if you will, I guess for, in layman terms, it would be something like, uh, um, and I don't wanna, I'm trying to think of a good analogy, like a, um, cash app card or like, uh, um, just like an account that can be used so that, um, say that the high school, um, principal might have a P card. And with that card, they'll be able to go and buy whatever those, a lot of things that have been them to purchase. them to purchase. But this way, um, we won't have, it'll help us keep our finances clean. And, um, our CFO will be able to turn the cards off. So it's basically a card with an account attached to it and, and a pot of money that can be used for specific items. And then, um, our CFO can turn that card off at any time, um, once it's been used. It will help us, um, use only, it's, it's pretty much like a cash card. And that's why I was comparing it to cash app, so people know it's those, what that is. Um, you know, you can only use what you have, and you're actually not like occurring all of this interest and all of these extra fees for swiping and using the cards from place to place. And, um, also it's a quick turnaround. Um, if people are familiar, um, normally in the school district, you would petition, you know, the finance department for a check when you want to buy something or purchase order. And then you have to wait on that turnaround and then get the check. And then if the check is something is on sale or something is more, then, you know, you have to go back and do forth. And so this P card will give you the option to still only get the money that's allotted for in the budget. But, um, the finance director could turn it off and it's a quicker turnaround and it's a little more convenient for spending. And so, um, there's a resolution for us to, um, we've been talking about this, I think, for the last couple of months since I've been on the finance committee and, and our, um, superintendent now has a staff report. They'll be voted on, um, next week to approve the P card.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Next, we have the Human Resources Committee report, and I'll pass it back over to Treasurer Creighton.
The Human Resource, um, Committee met the twenty-eighth. And, um, we, um, are, um, Human Resource Director, um, had a list of current new hires and separations of employment. Um, so we talked about those. Um, there's a, a whole list of, um, new positions. Um, we also talked about, um, the interviewing process. I think there were some questions about as positions are coming, you know, available, how are we interviewing, how are we selecting candidates, you know, what is the process like? So she, um, actually went through that. We also, um, I know it's been a hot topic with us talking and looking, um, for a high school principal. Um, so we talked about that recruitment process and what that would be like. Um, the HR committee, um, will be on that panel. And also we'll have a few parents and students, um, on that. And so we're really excited to, um, recruit a new principal for our high school. Um, we talked about the turnover data. I know that, um, that's also something that we're very, we've had a lot of concerns and questions about. And so, um, our Human Resource Department, um, is going to actually do a presentation tonight under their, um, section about turnover data and, um, what that looks like. Um, and one of those new positions that I, uh, mentioned earlier, um, is the Assistant Director of Athletics and Student Activities. And so that, it was a lot of discussion around that and, and actually what the process is with starting um, or opening a new position and whether or not, um, we need more approval for that. Um, these positions are falling under our literacy grant. But, um, there's still some question about that. And so I see that there's a resolution and I'm not sure um, if we're still in a discussion stage or if we're ready for the resolution. Because I know there were some things that we were looking to get more clarity on. Um, but that was one of the things that we talked about. And, um, I think that's all.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Is there, um, are there any questions for her regarding HR? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the next order of business, which is the Barien Risa General Fund.
Second, I have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Dr. Townsend.
No, no worries. The following up with Treasury Creighton about the HR committee. Uh, we talked about creating new positions and the policy and wording. Uh, we did have an opportunity to research our policy. And we worked with our attorney to identify how we create new positions here. And with the policy as it's written, written, uh, the board approved positions that affect the general budget. Um, not those funded by grants, uh, because those change all the time. So for example, if I write a grant for ten million dollars and in that grant, I write that I need a program manager to direct that grant. Uh, that generally does not need board approval because it's grant funded, does not affect the general fund. So I wanted to, uh, give that clarity to the Human Resources Committee with regards to the Assistant Director of Athletics and Student Activities. And I'm going to talk more about what that means uh, with regards to restructuring and why we're looking to do that. And it's all grant funded, uh, will not affect our general fund budget at all. We just got to get this high school official and our district vertically aligned so our young people can have an optimal education experience. And I'll talk about that later as well when I go back to my part of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. And up next is the Barien Risa General Fund Operating Budget. All right, so the Benton Harbor Area Schools, uh, District is within the, uh, Barien Risa operating district. And so,
Okay, I believe, uh, President Robinson's com- computer froze. So we'll, um, wait a few minutes to see if she can get back online here. Bear with us, ladies and gentlemen, see if I can get President Robinson on the phone. I believe her, um, internet went out and she just logged off here. Give me one second, please.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I'm not sure what actually occurred. Um, how much of what I read did you all hear? I looked up and I wasn't on the media anymore.
None. So right when you pulled it up, you, you paused, and then I told everyone to hold tight until you get back. So just start from the top.
Thank you. Okay, so this is from Barien Risa. This is the General Fund Operating Budget. The Benton Harbor Area Schools District is within the Barien Risa District. And so Section three eight zero point six two four of the revised school code states in part, "An intermediate school board shall have its proposed budget reviewed by its constituent districts each year as follows. A, no later than May first of each year, the intermediate, uh, school district shall submit its proposed budget for the next school fiscal year to the board of constituent district for review. B, not later than June first of each year, the board of each constituent district shall review the proposed intermediate school district budget, shall adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed intermediate school district budget, and shall submit to the intermediate school for any specific objections and proposed changes the constituent district board has to the budget. If an intermediate school board receives any specific objections or proposed changes, the intermediate school board shall consider the proposed budget changes. So attached, they provided us copies of the Barien Risa twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget for its general fund and special education fund. Also, they provided us with a sample blank resolution for our school board to use to act on the budget prior to June first. So that's why we have that on our agenda this month, because they did provide us with the budget as indicated prior to May for first, and that was forwarded to the board and included on the agenda. But we next week will have to vote to approve what Barien Risa has provided or decided for its general fund operating budget. Um, so if you would go down a little bit, this is the budget here as it stands. And so this was provided to, uh, each of the districts, sent to the presidents, local, local district boards of education and district superintendents for each of the constituent, uh, board or s- school district within Barien Risa. So we have to take a vote next week on whether we are approving the budget as it stands or whether we have any adjustments that we want to make. And so there's a resolution that we'll be reviewing for next week or we'll be voting on for next week. And so this is the sample resolution that they provided when we return it. It will indicate which members of the board were present. Um, how many, uh, ayes and how many nays we had, and just giving them an update on whether the Benton Harbor Area School Board District approved the budget for their general fund as provided. And so Liz, if you could do me a favor and open our actual resolution. And this is Board Report B one. A reason for board consideration, Michigan law requires in- intermediate school districts to share their proposed operating budgets with local school districts each spring. Facts and analysis, the ISD provided a copy of its proposed budget in April. State law states that by June first of each year, the board of each constituent district shall review the proposed intermediate school district budget, shall adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed intermediate school district budget, and shall submit to the intermediate school board any specific objections and proposed changes the constituent district board has to the budget. Uh, the law further states that if the intermediate school board receives any special objections or proposed changes, the intermediate school board shall consider the proposed budget. And so next week, we'll be voting what, on whether we choose to adopt the Barien Risa budget resolution as presented. Are there any questions or comments on the board, um, Report B one regarding the Barien Risa General Fund Operating Budget?
Yes, I have a question. When we look at the Barien Risa, um, budget, operating budget, um, who, who looks, who reviews this budget as it relates to what Benton Harbor needs? Um, as it relates to what is actually allocated to Benton Harbor Area Schools and, uh, you know, what, what, what amount of money comes to this district? What types of things, um, do they supply for the district? Who checks and see if what's supposed to happen for us is actually happening? And is it done in, uh, a fair and equitable way? So who does that work for us? Before we, uh, vote to say, yes, this, we, we look at this budget. I'm looking at this number, these numbers here. And, um, I don't, I just see the numbers there, but I don't know how these numbers, what, what, what do these numbers mean as it relates to Benton Harbor? Does Benton Harbor area schools, do they have so much money allocated for each school district? If so, how much it goes to Benton Harbor? Is that what Benton Harbor is supposed to get? All of these different things. So who breaks it down like that from our district and order for us to have, be able to make an informed decision?
Mr. Johnson, do you, have you had an opportunity to review this bu- budget or are you familiar with the previous years?
No, I've not seen this budget until I saw the link today. But I'd be happy to provide information, the update. We do re- include dollars in our general fund budget uh, to reflect dollars that we receive from the ISD for what's called Act eighteen revenue.
Okay.
Go ahead, Madam President, sorry.
It looks like Dr. Townsend was, was attempting to unmute as well.
No, I was going to agree with Mr. Johnson. We can follow up and have more information prior to next week's board meeting. Um, Act eighteen usually supports special education, uh, for those who would like to know what Act eighteen is. But we can have more information so we all can have an informed decision.
Thank you, because I don't feel comfortable, um, just voting on things and not knowing what I'm voting on. Um, what benefits, my, my, my concern always at the forefront is being what is Benton Harbor supposed to get? It's Benton Harbor getting what our CFO knows that we're supposed to have. Like, we're, we're, we're presenting this tonight and saying that we need to do this in a timely manner, but our CFO just saw it tonight. And so for us to be able to make an informed decision, we don't know what we're saying yes to. If we don't know what Benton Harbor is supposed to receive or how this benefits Benton Harbor. So again, thank you so very much for that information. And I would definitely like to, um, hear about that as soon as we possibly can. Um, how that looks so that we can make an informed decision. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so we normally, uh, would have gone over this information in our Barien County, uh, Board of Education Presidents and Superintendents meeting last month. But the meeting was actually scheduled for the same day as our board meeting. So Dr. Townsend and I were unable to attend. But we will ensure that we provide those additional details as relates to the monies that will be issued to the district. Um, being that it's not readily visible in this particular report. Any other question? You're welcome. Any other questions from the board regarding the Barien Risa Operating Budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to the Black Wall Street Discussion. Okay, so this resolution is actually, uh, not an actual resolution of the Board of Education, but, uh, a resolution created by the committee that developed this initiative. This resolution was shared with, uh, multiple organizations in support of this particular effort. And so we've been here, you have heard, uh, numerous community members expressing support of this particular resolution. So I am going to, uh, read it because we've never actually officially reflected this particular resolution in our board meeting. I'm going to try to, um, get through it really quickly um, so that I don't take up too much time reading what's here. Uh, whereas according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, racism is a social detriment of health and that has a profound impact to the health status of children, adolescents, emerging adults and their families. Racism has not been successfully eradicated in the city of Benton Harbor. And whereas according to the American Psychological Association, African-Americans are more exposed to racial discrimination than any other ethno-racial group, the city of Benton Harbor has a higher population of residents at risk of dangers of institutional racism. And whereas the state of Michigan took four point five billion from K through twelve funds to plug budget holes, the state should consider returning those dollars to all Michigan K through twelve schools and installments in regards to said appropriations as a form of reparations to revitalize targeted public school districts charged with serving underserved communities such as Benton Harbor Area Schools. The state should divide thirty percent of those dollars between targeted districts to, one, to help one, eliminate the school debt for school districts that have been most affected by the harmful policies. And two, to provide a fresh start to rehabilitate traumatized districts. And whereas repeat instances of school closures greatly undermine the district's ability to deliver seamless services. And whereas according to Order twelve fourteen, the Emergency Financial Manager implemented zoning map ordinance amended that amendment that replaced the blue public school zone protections with yellow residential zoning liberties in the city of Benton Harbor. This zoning change left Benton Harbor Area Schools vulnerable to gentrification and removal profit strategies. Therefore, and individuals are requested to put their name here. Supports the request for Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education to explore fresh start plans to revitalize school district land for the betterment of the community rather than reducing the facility footprint from six hundred thousand square feet down to a range of two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. Therefore, let it be resolved that your particular organization supports the Black Wall Street Zone petition presented by the Racial Equity Committee, which urges the city of Benton Harbor City Commission to remove the residential zoning de- designation set forth by the Emergency Financial Manager in two thousand and twelve and replace the above Benton Harbor Area School District sites zoning ordinance with, one, a public school zoning protection ordinance, our city officials shall pass an ordinance to resolve Benton Harbor Area Schools sites back to public school zones. And two, racial equity zoning category, our city officials shall establish a distinct historical Black Wall Street Zone category for Benton Harbor Area School sites in order to help ensure the Benton Harbor Area School alum and Benton Harbor descendants of slavery receive adequate racial equity safeguards to simulate restorative social justice agreements and community benefits while deferring aggressive removal practices, mass incarceration tactics and school shutdowns. And so, um, that was a really quick read, but I just wanted to ensure that I got it. And so um, that was a really quick read, but I just wanted to ensure that I got it out so everyone could understand what the actual resolution is that we've referenced in our uh last month's meeting and currently. Um, some members of the Board of Education did get a chance to attend the public forum that was held. And I know we also shared the link to the presentation for those that did not have an opportunity to attend that particular meeting. So I wanted to open the floor for conversation and discussion regarding this particular initiative, um, just to give the board an opportunity to share their current thoughts on it.
Um, Madam President, how are you this evening? Um, I don't know if I have the floor right now.
You have the floor, Vice President Bradley.
Okay, um, I did have an opportunity to um view the uh replay of the presentation. And I really, um, really enjoyed the um presentation, especially the one with the um uh planning commissioner, um, or chairman of the planning committee, I should say, um, for the city. And also, you know, just getting more insight, um, and I had a chance to hear a few questions. But I also do have um a few questions of my own, uh, but before also, I did hear something about the um, when I was listening to that, the historical grants. And so I think that would be something that we, you know, we could look into, but I did have a few questions if we um real quick, if that's okay.
Okay, are your questions for me, or are your questions regarding the, the committee that put the resolution together?
Um, it's for the committee putting the resolution together.
Okay, so I'll allow you to pose your questions, and then what we can potentially do is maybe get an email drafted, or you can send that information to me to see if we can get those, those clarifications for you, or we'll see how it goes. But go ahead.
Okay, um, so the first thing I wanted to know is, uh, what is the uh organizational structure for the Black Wall Street thing? Or uh, and um, I also had another question regarding that too, um, and I'm gonna put that in an email uh to the president. But I just wanted to know if there's an organizational structure. Uh, if the next question is, if we agree to this resolution, then what? And then, um, my other question is, has um the organization reached out to Rural School or Cornerstone Alliance, uh, or even to the community engagement committees to uh see if about collaborating or working on ideas? Because you know, they're also, if they can be a united front, so that's the other thing. Uh, and then also, my last question is, looking at the zoning map for the city of St. Joe, I do see that their uh schools are in um residential areas or zone residential areas. Uh, so what would be the, uh, why would we want to change our zoning areas to um school district zones? And that was definitely my question.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Bradley. Was, was there any other feedback or any other conversation from the board regarding the Black Wall Street Zone Resolution?
Yes, uh, Madam President. Uh, good evening to everyone. I too heard the presentation and enjoyed it uh on the Black Wall Street. Matter. Um, my question was kind of like, uh, Vice President Bradley's, like, have you reached out to other entities that are also a part of Benton Harbor? Would also like to preserve um, or, or uh preserve what you're talking about, the land. Um, I understand, because I, I lived in the city of Benton Harbor for, uh, for, since nineteen seventy-five. And I can remember uh attending, because we had a, a block club. And I can remember attending the meetings at City Hall. And I remember um particularly at this one time, um, Alex Little was the city manager. And he was telling the people, telling the citizens of Benton Harbor, don't sell your land, don't sell Benson Place. Don't sell Mercy Hospital, don't sell uh other thing, other uh structures in your city, because you can develop them and make money for your own city. Of course, uh, Benson Place ended up being stole, so uh Mercy Hospital also ended up being so. But I remember that so vividly because um I was thinking, what a wonderful opportunity for our city to uh have an investment that would, would generate income for the city. So uh, with that being said, I would say, you know, Benton Harbor is not just one race of people, one, one group of people, but you know, if we could spread it out and reach um all of the citizens of Benton Harbor uh to get on board, because this seems to be a worthwhile effort. Um, I'm for not giving our land away. I'm for not giving our, our, our benefits of our land away. Uh, and for developing our own, and so that our children, or my grandchildren now, uh, can have access to the wonderful things that are in Benton Harbor. Uh, the park and, and you know, Jean Clark Park and the other areas that were um, that are in the area. But some have given away to other entities. You know, even just the Y, they moved out of Benton Harbor. But that was something that our kids were, would benefit from it being here. Now it's gone. So not that we can't, you know, um, partner with them in other activities, in activities. But um, you know, if we, as many people as you can get on board, as many groups of people, as of communities of people that you can get on board to um, to champion your cause, the greater chance of it being successful. And um, you know, and, and have the mainstay of, of staying in place. So it's not just a passing phase, or uh, you know, or, or here that, here we go again. So you know, let's, let's champion our entire community of Benton Harbor to be a part of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Rocket Martin. Anyone else for feedback or comment or discussion on the Black Wall Street resolution?
Madam President.
Yes, Treasurer Creighton, you have the floor.
Um, I just want to thank um the um Black Wall Street Committee and Mrs. Gavin Green for the presentation. Um, I really enjoyed the presentation, to say the least. Um, it, it was some really good information, um, some great um speakers. We had stu- it was students on there. It's, it was just a really good um use of time. Um, I appreciated um the storylines. And for me, you know, I um started out in education as a high school student. I was a teacher cadet. And before that, I was a student at the tech center. And so as they talked about the timelines and talked about all of the historic things that existed within our community, um, at one point, I remember those things, um, whether I was the little girl or um a student in the high school, um, that benefited from the Career and Technical Education Center. Um, when I first started here, I don't know if you, uh, people know this, but when I started here as a teacher in two thousand and eight, um, I was actually um teaching the teacher cadet program. And so um, that, that thing came full circle for me. Uh, I was one of those first cohorts of people or students that graduated um with that teacher cadet certificate from Benton Harbor High School in two thousand and one, and then went on to college and came back as a certified teacher um to teach the program that encouraged me to be a teacher. And so I just want to kind of point that out, you know, it is Teacher Appreciation Day and Week. Um, but I just, you know, as I watched that presentation and watched those um individuals from our community pour their hearts out about, you know, the historical um presence of Benton Harbor and Benton Harbor area schools and the rich traditions and all of the programs. It really, really put me in a good place um as a board member and as an alumni of this um district. It really did, um, as they unfolded their plan, um, the ideas of Black Wall Street. And they talked about, you know, us having the ability as a district to um apply for grants to um, wh- wh- what do I want to use? To kind of restore some of those programs, um, to restore the history of our community and our district. Um, it really, really hit home for me. Um, um, I think it was the day after my human resource committee and also my um finance committee. And so as I heard um our superintendent talk about ideas with student activities, all of these ideas that um he and his team has for student activities and bringing all those activities and programs back. You know, one thing that came to my mind is that, you know, if we can just all sit down at the table, you know, we're all passionate in our own way, you know, we all have different educational backgrounds, social backgrounds, uh, family, you know, backgrounds and communication style. But you know, we have, i- in the words of Mr. Tripoli, he, he, he always says, you know, if we sit down, you know, there are more similarities than there are differences. And, and that night, watching that Black Wall Street presentation, that's what I felt. I felt that, you know, we have a lot of talented individuals working in this community, living in this community, and from this community. And if we can all sit down together and talk about what it is that we want. I think um, we had it during the public comments, we, we had a lady um that talked about that. Like, we really sat down at the table and talked about what we want and what it is that we would like to see happen in our community, with our land, with our schools. You know, for our children, I think this community and this world would be a much better place. And so that Black Wall Street presentation for me, uh, I, I have to be a hundred percent honest. Before um last month's meeting, I really didn't know a lot about it, and I could not um really speak to it at all. But now, I can honestly say, you know, when they talked about the, the possible museums that could be grant funded. You know, the African-American um initiatives throughout our community that could also be grant funded. I mean, you know, there are some things and people that want to come here and bring programs here. You know, we think about the art district and all of those things. It's just so many things. Um, the, the, I think the ideas and the list, you know, are endless and the possibilities are endless. If we sit down and actually figure out what it is, you know, that we want. And I heard that um, the, I, I don't want to mess up his title, but Mr. Reed, when he talks about um, the zoning and, and the land and, you know, the ideas behind it. One thing um that, that stood out for me that he said was, if we put the politics of things aside, you know, and really think about some things that we can do, you know, we're on the right track. And so for me, uh, I was just, you know, encourage our board and um our community and all of my colleagues to just know like the, um, I think we're moving in the right direction. Um, this Black Wall Street um zone, I think, you know, we, we, we've kind of mis- categorized it as to what it is. Uh, I, I'm thankful and hopeful that we can kind of narrow down and continue to narrow down what it is specifically that um, the, the organization wants from us as a district. Um, but I'm clear as to now the land and that, you know, we have to, um, we have the autonomy to decide what it is that we want to do with our land. And you know, I think someone pointed out how land-rich we are. And so, you know, saying all of that to say, um, I just appreciate the learning um opportunity from that. Um, it, it was a great use of time. Um, I think um as we work on our strategic plan as a district, you know, it will also help us to, to keep those things in mind, you know, so that we can um move forward with what it is that we're doing. And so um, I just want to thank everyone. Uh, I'm sorry for rambling on, but you know, there's a lot of emotional things going on right now in our community. And, and I just think, you know, we have to get on the same page and put our, you know, selves and our strong, you know, personalities and that roar of the tiger, you know, I mean, that's who we are. But we have to be able to, you know, kind of cage our aggression and do what it is that we need to do for our community and our children.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Anyone else from the board have any insider input to provide?
Yes, Honorable President, oh, sorry, if Mr. Tripoli's gonna go.
No, you can go.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Bones, and then Secretary Tripoli.
Sorry, when I look at this, um, I have several questions. Um, Benton Harbor area schools is not a city school district. It reflects several different towns that also have diverse populations. And um, they also pay tax dollars. Has this committee reached out to those local municipalities? And also, if I'm correct, when I was the city commissioner, at any time, you can zone something, but it can always be changed by that, the city commissioner, the planning commissioner, or development. So that zoning could change. Um, those were just two of my questions.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Bones. Uh, Secretary Tripoli, you have the floor.
Thank you so very, very much. I um, first of all, I would like to piggyback on um what trustee um Rocket said. Um, also trustee um Creighton, Treasurer Creighton. I too was very, 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 not only impressed, but I learned a lot um, from being a participant in that presentation. The one thing that um, I think that, that, that's very, very important is that the resolution is basically saying that we support what was presented by the Racial Equity Committee, which urges the city of Benton Harbor City Commission to remove the residential zoning designations set by the Emergency Financial Manager in two thousand and twelve, and replace the above Benton Harbor area school district sites zoning ordinances, and it goes on whatever the resolution says. The thing that stood out in my mind that most of, that was very informative to me as a member of the Board of Education was what actually happened um with the blue, purple, and the yellow. And when the emergency manager um came into play, he just straight moved all of the property in Benton Harbor, the city of Benton Harbor. Um, and just made them um, changed the whole tone of the zone and took the school zones away. So I, I, there was no conversation, or maybe there was conversation, backdoor conversations, I'm not sure. But I, I, that's the piece that stood out in my mind. And I think that it's very important that we understand that we do not give the wrong information. I also think that it's very important that people understand that this Board of Education represents um, no one, no one individual thoughts or feelings. And I think that the board is intellectual enough, and I also think the board is committed enough to make those uh separations. Um, I speak for myself, and I speak, you know, on behalf of the constituent. And as President Biden said, that uh when he became the President of the United States, he was not just the President of the Democrat, but that he was the President of the United States of America. Um, this is some powerful, powerful information. Um, Mr. Reed really made it clear to me. Um, and that is something that, from a board's perspective, I think that that should be at the forefront of our decision-making as it relates to what actually happened um to the designations, you know, um. When you look at Stern Bronson, which, when you look at the founders of this um community of Benton Harbor Stern Bronson, and the Bronson family was one of the founding families of this community. And I remember the time when they said Stern Bronson was full of asbestos, and it was this and the other. And now people live in Stern Bronson, you know. So I know all the games and uh politics from a historical perspective. I am a product of the, the, the tech center. I didn't just move here, I was born and raised here. I was formally educated in Benton Harbor area schools in kindergarten to twelfth grade. I've lived here my entire life. Um, I learned in a Distributive Education Clause of America parliamentary procedure at the tech center in Benton Harbor area schools. I am very um supportive, but I also feel that um, there are some things that the board have to, some more things to know. You know, the last meeting, you know, the things that got out in the community, we want the board to say yes, we want the board to say yes, we want the board to say yes. But the board couldn't say, for me, I could not say yes without the informa- without knowing the information. And I did get some more information that, that, that would help me be able to make um what I think is the right decision. The land, the designation of the zone. The land, the designation of the zone, the planning, um, where you could take, these are residential, um, now they are, everything is residential. I did ask the question, this is in reference to, uh, trustee Bowen's concern, because Benton Harbor Area Schools is made up of seven different municipalities. We have school dis, we have school buildings and not only in Benton Harbor proper. We have school buildings in, um, Benton Township. We have school buildings in St. Joe Township. We have school buildings that are in Sodas. And so, you know, for me, I, I, I learned a lot. I, and, and the more I hear, the more I, I am in support. But I still think that, you know, the, the, to, to rush through, there are some things that we need to be able to discuss. I'm not sure, as, as Mr. Reed says, that it'll probably be, at this particular juncture, it would probably be in June or late June. But I would like for this board to please take into consideration and take time and, 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 and learn more about this because within this, uh, resolution is our future. Within this resolution is our future. And so I, again, like I said, I, I, I'm grateful that, and it was good to see other board members on, um, on the line. I know, I think it was about four or five of us and that, that had an opportunity just to sit there and listen, you know. And these are citizens of the community of Benton Harbor. And that's what, the, the, the same citizens might, maybe these individuals are not the ones that voted for all of us, but these are citizens of Benton Harbor Area Schools. And I think that any organization or any group of citizens that come to this Board of Education should be respected and listened to and heard. I also would like to say, when I look at some of the aspects, we talked about, when I look at the therefore, um, support the request for Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education to explore. It didn't say that we would have to adopt Fresh Start, it's just asking the board to explore it. And so when I think about the things that were presented at Fresh Start, in the presentation, they talked about Fresh Start. These same people who have done this work, this is not stuff that's just thrown together. This has been, I've been following this initiative two and three years out when it first started with the, with the whole community being in break, pulled in before COVID. And, you know, I would like to see some of these things and some of the people that are involved in this involved in when we get ready to do the strategic planning for the district. Because the strategic planning for the district requires community engagement. And it cannot be done with just a small group of individuals, these are community members. So again, in, in closing, I, um, I, um, I think it, I think it is something that we really, really need to con- consider. I think it's something that we really need to look into more and get, um, more questions, um, answered before we go through. But they are asking us to support the petition. They're not asking us to say that when we say this, that we're going to adopt all of this and all of that. But I would definitely want to get more research. And I, I do not like what happened when they just took it on their own as a city manager. I mean, as a, uh, 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 but, um, the man who was, I forgot what they called the person that was over the, that, that came in and, um, Lord, the Emergency Financial Manager for the City of Benton Harbor and to come in and just blanketly just take and change all of our designations of our school district. And, and that's something that we definitely need to research and, and look at from a board perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Uh, trustee Buchanan, go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, good afternoon to everyone. And, uh, thanks for the prayers you sent out from me. But I know some of the members on the board, I know Ms. Marjorie, that name, remember, they had Marla Sidney. Number one, people on the board, Dr. Towns was not from here, but I love him. We, we need to move fast on some things. We need to stop low rating people and talking about them. I could, two, two, three families that's messed, that's suffering right now. Because it's not what the young people are doing. I walk among them. And, 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 and they need something. So they had Marla Sidney, they had Victor Walter, Donald Atkins, all over there, Clarence Washington. He played the Black Santa Claus downtown for the kids. What we need to do, we need, like Mr. Triplett said, we need to think and, and, and realize what's going on. But, you know, let's, everybody's shout is not a Christian. So let's make sure we know what, let's do it right. You ain't got to worry about it. And I would like for Mr. Robinson to tell you this. Now, my, my phone keep going in and out. And you, I'm, when I was growing up, I didn't have a cell phone or no computer. So if I, my phone, you, if you asked me something and I, and when I hit the wrong button. But we definitely need to think before we start voting, putting this in here and that in there to make sure it's done right. No hidden agendas and none of that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Buchanan, and I appreciate you for hanging in there and joining in with us whether via computer or phone. So we do appreciate your, um, contribution. I, I did want to, um, add to the conversation regarding this topic. And I know that, um, Secretary Triplett and Treasurer Creighton asked for clarification and also to, so that the community could have clarification. Um, the Community Engagement Advisory Committee did formulate a plan for, on, you know, together on behalf of Benton Harbor Area Schools. And one thing that I've noticed is that there is, uh, seems to be a focus on the fact that Cornerstone Alliance was a part of that. But I'm not sure if individuals have gone to Michigan.gov to look at that actual committee and see who all was involved. So I want to ensure that people know that that was a committee that involved citizens. Um, we had Joyce Parker, who's the deputy, uh, treasurer for the Michigan Department of Treasury. We had Reverend Ma- Maurice McAfee, he's actually a Ministerial Alliance representative. We had Denise Wadley-Steets, who was a Board of Education trustee at the time. Um, we did have Rob Cleveland, who was the president of Core Stone Alliance. We also had Lisa Crips Downey, who was a community-based foundation representative. We had Trevon Gentry, who was a Benton Harbor Area School Student Representative. And we also had Danetta Moore, Benton Harbor Area Schools' parent representative. Uh, Dr. William Pearson, a Michigan Department of Education representative. We had Brenda Terrell, who is the teacher and union representative. We had Jessica Thomas, who represented the Bureau of Local Government and School Services. And then we also had Dr. Andre Townsend, who once hired, joined that committee as a representative of Benton Harbor Area Schools. And then lastly, Dr. Wayne Watson, who was a school board consultant. So, um, I just want to make sure when we have information out there, it's full information. So they made an effort to have a range of community representatives and stakeholders in that conversation. It wasn't something that was just Cornerstone Alliance's decision or discussion as relates to the Community Engagement, Enga- Engagement Advisory Committee's plan and recommendations made to the district. It was a unified discussion, um, that included board members and Dr. Townsend and ministers who, you know, have the best interest of the district at heart. And so that was something that was important to me for everyone to know. Um, I'm not sure if everyone on the line as well is, has been tuned in full-time. But Dr. J-, uh, Mr. Johnson, our CFO, also clarified that there is no current property that the school board has up for sale. So I think in part of the Black Wall Street, um, conversation or just general conversation about what is best for the district and just, you know, our land and, and concern for the community in general, there is this misconception that we are currently making efforts to sell land and there's no land that's currently up for sale at this time. There were recommendations that were provided regarding, um, the square footage of Benton Harbor Area Schools. But as stated, that was a collective effort and those were recommendations that the school board adopted. But we have the power to determine what that looks like moving forward. And so that's information that I just wanted to ensure that everyone had and that the board had an opportunity to provide because often information is, is, uh, presented in public comment or stated, um, online on social media. And we don't have an opportunity to provide any additional clarification. So I just wanted to ensure that people understood who all was involved in that, uh, CAC uh, plan that was developed. And so as everyone else stated, I too enjoyed the presentation. I was there. I thanked everyone involved for, um, the effort that was given and the research and the development of graphs to make things easily accessible and understandable. Um, but I am where Secretary Triplett is in that I think, you know, there's, I understand the efforts and, and the mission that is presented in wanting to ensure that the property of the citizens of Benton Harbor and Benton Harbor Area Schools is protected. But I think because it seems, um, you're talking about zone protect, protections or putting in applications, it's something that seems so, um, major. And so I understand where he's coming from in us ensuring that we are doing our due diligence, as he loves to say, and, and fully understanding what that looks like and what that has the power to change or what the pros and cons or impacts and things of that nature would be. And also for me, I understand that right now we're in a residential zone and we would go to, you know, school zones. I don't fully under- I don't fully understand what type of limitations that would place for, let's say we did decide that we wanted to sell a property. Would that limit us to only certain companies being able to buy that particular property because we are back to school zones? And I know that it's something that we've done in the past. So I just think it, it just involves us doing a little bit more research in understanding what is being asked and, and what that's going to look like moving forward. But I did, um, appreciate the presentation and I appreciate the sheer amount of effort and concern that is obvious, um, by those involved in this initiative as well. So I hope I wasn't too long-winded, but I just wanted to kind of give the factual details about the CAC because I know that that was a concern about our land and our property. I don't want people to think we're trying to pass out buildings like hotcakes. We don't currently have anything for sale. So, um, that was my input to the discussion. I think just about everybody had a chance to speak. And so I believe that there was, um, a request that we vote tonight. If I'm not mistaken, someone mentioned that before. I personally, um, as a president, don't believe that the board is in that particular space to do so. I know that we've had the conversation. We normally have discussion at our work sessions and then, um, look into voting at a following session. So I don't know if anyone else wants to provide insight on that. I was not, I did not anticipate us taking a vote tonight, but I'm, I'm not sure if anyone else had any input on, um, the conversation at this time.
Madam President?
Yes, Secretary Triplett.
I think that it was just, uh, first of all, it's just good that it was put back, you know, placed on there so we could have a discussion and that people could have an opportunity to voice their opinion. And those of us who attended were able to, um, um, get some more information. For me, um, as I stated, and I will not do this, I will not vote for anything that I don't know anything about. I'm not going to do that. That, that, that is being irresponsible. Um, I do think that there, that timing is, 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 is very important. And, um, I would really, really, really like for the Board of Education to, um, be able to really meet with, uh, Mr. Reed, who is the chairman of the Planning Commission. Because also on that, um, on that presentation, there was a lot of information that was presented to us, how we would even approach that. I am not for and never, ever will be for selling anything, any land that belonged to Benton Harbor Area School, where people have paid taxes for these and, and, and for me, just because I'm sitting on this board, to say that I have that kind of power to speak on behalf of the people. My parents lived here, have lived here in Benton Harbor, Michigan for almost sixty-five years. My mom is gone on now, but my dad is still here. And so they've been paying taxes in this community for fifty-plus years. And I have, as soon as I start working, I pay taxes here. So I'm not willing. I'm not, I don't care what kind of backdoor meetings people are having. I'm not privy to that and I don't want to be privy to it. But I do think that there is a sense of urgency and that we need to come up with a plan so that we can, and get, uh, the knowledge that we need as soon as possible so that we can say without, um, a shout of doubt, that either we are in support of this resolution um, and how we will move forward. Again, I did have an opportunity, because I said at the last meeting that I would, um, contact Ms. Gavin as a citizen of the community, and I did have an opportunity to speak with her, you know. And so I, I, I don't believe that everything, you know, that, that, I mean, I have good information. And I think that, um, it, it's important. And I know timing is very, very important. Um, but still, I think that there's some things for me that, you know, we need to get some more information so that when we come forth, we can come strong and say, hey. Because in this present, you know, I, it, 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 it kind of bothers me that we struggle as African Americans, the ones who are suffering the most injustice in this country, that we struggle when we see the word black. And it seems like we get afraid. And we feel like we have to include everybody and include this and that, but everybody, everybody, um, didn't have their knee on their neck. Okay, so it's okay. It is really okay for us to stand up, um, as it relates to us as a people, as it relates to our children. So again, um, I would like to see us really get some more information, um, in particular from Mr. Reed. Um, and I would, um, also, uh, like to, uh, look a little bit more into it, you know. But I, I, I feel confident in, in the things that they presented. I, I, I feel completely different. And I am so happy that I actually went and saw it for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Any, anyone else for, um, I think everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
Okay, um, I just wanted to, um, clarify or, or at least some clarity. Um, I know that, um, the Black Wall Street, you know, kind of overlaps a lot with other initiatives. But I, I don't know if, um, we've been fair, you know, are they asking us about rezoning? Or are they asking us about, you know, are they asking us to take a vote to rezone? Um, or are they asking us to, you know, adopt the whole program or to, you know? I, I guess that's the part that, um, I think, you know, with all the information and, and them providing a thorough presentation of everything that they do. I don't know that this resolution is asking us to do anything but to support, um, the rezoning of, of our schools, um, from residential to school zones. And so I guess that's what I'm trying to, um, figure out. And then also, um, are we going to, I know that we said we want more information, but I just wonder, uh, and I want to ensure that, um, we're going to follow through with this. So are we going to put a timeline on it? Are we going to seek clarity from an attorney? You know, like what is it that we're planning to do as a board so that we can make sure, um, that we at least vote on it, you know, so that we can vote on it and move forward with it? So, um, if it's not something that we, you know, vote, they're asking us to vote yes. But as a board, I think with a vote, we can really see and take, you know, I know we've had a lot of discussion, but, you know, we can take the vote, um, to do that, if that's what they're asking us to do by a certain date. And so I just wanted to, you know, be clear about that. Um, are they asking us to put it on the agenda for a vote? Is that something that, you know, we can do and if we don't pass it right now, we can revisit it or another resolution can come about? So I know I'm rambling, but I guess, you know, that, those are the kind of things that I'm wondering. Like, are they asking us to go ahead and take a vote, um, for next week and then move forward? If there are some other things that we need to do, you know, that they need to do, I think they're asking us to do that.
So I, I, I believe what, um, Ms. Gavin said in her initial comment is that she wanted for us to vote to support the Black Wall Street resolution. But then there was also a comment about the superintendent doing a quick application for the, uh, request for rezoning as well. Um, so I, I like Secretary Triplett's idea about getting, uh, more information from, um, the individual that spoke, um, or was interviewed at the presentation. And so that's something that I'll have to check into. Um, you know, we have limitations as it relates to how we do that, whether that's an actual board meeting or if we're going to split up and see if he has availability to tou- tou- touch base with those who would like to meet with him um, at different times so that we can ensure that we're not, um, you know, doing a full meeting or, um, violating OMA or anything like that. And we've done that before when we met with the Department of Treasury. We split up and did, um, I think three at the most for those who were interested in speaking with the Department of Treasury separately. So, um, that's something we can look into. um, that's something we can look into, reaching out and seeing if we, if he has availability to meet with those board members that would like to have um, get more information and have that conversation.
Yeah, I think what they're asking for is that they're they're not asking us for to, they're asking us to vote to support the petition that they are presenting. And so that's what I think that we need to focus in on. They're not asking us to vote for individual things or things like that, but they're asking us to vote for the petition that they are putting forth, I guess, to the the city. And so with us having these kind of questions and discussions, I think that it is good for us, we still have a little bit more uncertainty, um, a little bit more confusion about not 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 confusion, but we still have a few more things that we need to know, you know, um, in order for us to be able to take that move that quickly, you know. So that's what I think is is what they're asking for support. That saying that we have resolved that Benton Harbor area schools support the Black Wall Street petition presented by the Racial Equity Committee, which urges the city of Benton Harbor Co- City Commission to remove the residential zoning designation set what by the emergency manager in two thousand twelve. So that's what it's specifically saying, asking us to do. That's one of the things that it's asking us to do. When we look at the resolution, and I got clarification too, and my conversation is for us to really pay attention to the therefor's in the resolution, for us to get some understanding of what they're actually asking us to do. And you know, how can we move forward with even have it um, talk, because you you know, there's a presentation that would have to go before the Planning Commish, the Planning Committee for the City of Benton Harbor, because this happened um, under in in the city of Benton Harbor. And I think it's also important because I did ask, um, had they talked to other, but this something that happened in other municipalities that that we have buildings in. And were there conversations that we don't know anything about that took place in order for this to go forward? So yeah, that's something that we need to uh, have a little bit more discussion on.
I'm sorry, Treasurer Creighton. So if it if it's okay with the board, I know this is our board discussion. I would just like, if Ms. Gavin is is on the line, can you at least, I just would like for you to respond to the clarification as to the request of the board. Is the request of the board to support the resolution? Or is the request of the board to apply for the the rezoning? I think that's one of the things that we're not clear on.
Hey, yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for uh, giving me an opportunity to answer the question. Yeah, so we're asking that the Board of Education support this resolution. And the resolution is asking that the school district sites be rezoned back to what they were as public school zones, right? And so um, what Mr. Reed indicated is that in order to do that, um, the district would have to fill out a short applica- you know, fill out an application indicating that that is what they want. Right? And so in support of that resolution, you're saying that you do want your school district to have that public school zone protection, right? You're saying officially that that is what you want, that you did not want, you know, to be a residential area. And so there's an application that they have to look at because it's proof that you all agree to that. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I thought that's what I heard you say at the beginning about the superintendent doing the application, but I just wanted to clarify that 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 there is two part. So thank you.
Yeah, and and then of course, there's the racial equity of zoning category as well on there. So really, it's just this therefore part asking the um, school board to support this this short information here. Um, yeah, that's, that would be it. Pretty simple. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate Mrs. uh, Creighton's comment. It would be really great if if um, the school board would um, put it on the agenda uh, for a vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Gavin. I know that you weren't um, prepared to present, but I just, we are going back and forth about clarify what you're asking us for, and you're on the line. So I just wanted to ensure you were able to provide that clarification.
Thank you. Yes, I'm happy to answer any and all of the questions.
Okay. Well, I know that there were, um, there were some questions posed. I know that Liz takes pretty good minutes. And we can go back and and look at this session of the um, conversation. Um, if there are board members that are on the line that have specific questions that Ms. Gavin can answer, I know uh, Vice President Bradley started with some questions, uh, Secretary Triplet, a couple of other people had questions. You all could get those questions to me, and then I can try to get those questions in one document or Liz can get those in one document to her. So we can try to get some clarifications and then I'll check into um, Mr. Reed's availability for the other questions or or conversations that certain board members have indicated they'd like to have as well. So thank you, everyone. I believe everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Uh, what Treasurer Creighton, did you have something else to add or did uh, Mrs. Gavin provide clarification?
Yes, I was just going to ask, um, so what, is there something I can do to add this to the agenda for next week? So that we can actually, if we need to revise the resolution, um, actually take a vote that meets what it is that Ms. Gavin is asking, we can revise that resolution and put it on the agenda to be voted on and then move forward with whatever, you know, the board decides to do from there. Um, but you know, to be fair, that's something that I would like to request for us to do. Um, if you, you know, share with me what is it I need to do as a board member to to add that to the agenda for a vote next week.
Madam.
Go ahead, Secretary Triplet.
I I I I would I would like to say this too. I know and I did state where we talked about the the therefore uh, being being the thing that they're asking, but I also think that it would be, um, since we, the board has already voted on um, the agreement with the state. I think that we need to look at both of those documents and see with this document and that document where there could possibly be conflict with something that we're already going into agreement with. So I will be cautious, you know, um, and 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 make sure that we have that research um, in place. And that we have an understanding. That's why I come, I would say for me, uh, we 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 have a little bit more homework to do. Um, this is just my thoughts. We have a little more homework to do as a board of of education to be responsible. Um, um, be able to make an informed and responsible decision. So looking at the the agreement that we've gone in with the state, looking at the Black Wall Street Zone Resolution and doing some comparing and contrasting and and looking at the entire language of both particular documents um, before we make a a move.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Secretary Triplet. And so I have, I have heard everyone's insight um, regarding the discussion. And so there is a bit of of research we need to do. And so I will um, follow up with everyone um, regarding those items. And um, we'll, we'll have an update on next week's agenda. I think that it it appears that we have some um, conflicting thoughts as to the voter, the timeliness of the vote. Um, but we're gonna make sure that we can get our research done so we can know how to proceed for next week's meeting. So thank you, uh, Treasurer Creighton for your request. I did receive it. And thank you, everyone, for um, all of the insight that was provided and Ms. Gavin for jumping in there and providing that clarification because we could have gone back and forth, um, like the game of telephone and trying to clarify what we think we're being requested to do. So I thank you for for jumping in and answering that question. Okay, so we are going to move forward. The work session discussion was one that was heated um, debate last week or last week's meeting. And so uh, there was a request for us to consider a vote on whether we are gonna go from one meeting to two meetings. Um, we did get a chance to get our agenda approved for this particular week to at least have this uh, discussed. Um, I know that each each individual um, had gave some insight previously um, at both meetings, formally and during that agenda debate um, on insights regarding whether or not there needs to be an adjustment to our current schedule, which we are currently meeting twice a month. The first Tuesday of the month for work session and the second Tuesday of the month for um, our regular board meeting where we take votes. And so it was requested that we discuss and consider taking a vote to change whether we're gonna go back to one meeting per month and that being one general meeting that includes the work session discussion piece and then the actual vote. Um, and so last uh, month, on the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken, we voted to table that particular discussion for this month. And so here it is, um, tabled and on the agenda. I'm not sure if there's anyone that has anything that they would like to add to the conversation topic that wasn't added before. Um, but I'll open the floor for conversation if there is.
President Robinson.
Tre- yes, Treasurer Craig.
Okay, I just wanna um, clarify. I don't know if this is appropriate time to do it, but I did receive um, the email today with the legal um, opinion. Um, is this the time to clarify or um, when would you like for me to do so?
Um, are you clarifying your stance on the discussion topic?
Um, I I guess I just wanted to clarify that I was not um, making a complaint uh, on any board member, including um, our president. So I wasn't, that's that's kind of what I wanted to clarify. As it pertained to that conversation, I know that it was heated, you know.
Thank you. And and Trustee Bowens did also clarify. He, I think he clarified at the end of the meeting, but at that particular point, I had uh, complaints and concerns coming from each direction. Um, and so I appreciate you for providing that clarification. Um, and so I'm not sure who was present during the last meeting. You all are probably um, in awe at at uh, how serene this particular moment in conversation was, but we had a de- uh, debate, I would say, on the agenda and the work sessions and whether it should have been an item for discussion. Um, and so sometimes there are situations where we have trustees that have differing opinions on actions that we take as a board. And so we had a a debate regarding the actual agenda. And so I appreciate you, Treasurer Cre- Creighton, for uh, clarifying that you were not intending to file a complaint against me, but more so a concern about the agenda. Trustee Bowens has also provided that clarification as well. Um, and as stated, I I really do my best in trying to ensure that the agenda is one that is reflective of each trustee's concerns. And so, you know, as we clarify, superintendent presents the information that he wants to provide to the board and then trustees are able to, you know, ask me a question or ask for clarification or say they want to discuss stuff. And so I have yet to have an issue with that prior to last week's meeting. And in this meeting, it seems that maybe there are some of us that are on the fence about next week's agenda. So I'll have to kind of do my research and and kind of dig in a little bit as to what that's gonna look like. But I do appreciate you for providing that clarification. So thank you. And I am, I actually, as it relates to the work sessions, I did not provide my insight in the fourteen meeting. But I see the pros and cons of both. Um, as I stated, I think for me, because I was a new trustee, I think I was only in on the board for a month when they made the switch to go to one meeting. And so I learned how to do that um, in studying and and asking my questions and then taking a vote in that meeting. But I also had seasoned board members that were veterans that were able to kind of guide me in that process. So one meeting, I've seen it work and I know it works, but I also understand um, our new trustees that that want to have two meetings um, and want to ensure that they are able to provide those clarifications. So I see both sides of it. And that's one of the things that's that's difficult as president is ensuring that um, tr- tr- uh, Trustee Rocket Martin and I were in a meeting last night about parliamentary procedure. And it's about what one thing that stuck out for us is that they said sometimes you're in the majority and you're also in the minority at times, but the majority has to ensure that in the actions that it takes, that it's considering the minority. And that that's where the ineffective teamwork comes in. So that's why I'm able to see both sides of the fence um, and both sides of the conversation. But I did vote for, I think I voted against the work session in the initial meeting. So I never gave my feedback this time because I tried to look at everything as for the benefit of the school board. Um, so I know I haven't said which way I am, but just wanted to ensure everyone knows that I see both sides of things. And Trustee Buchanan, were you attempting to unmute to participate in this piece?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to have something to say. When you get, uh, are you done?
I'm done. Go ahead.
Okay, no. Well, I wanted to say to you, President Robinson, and to all the other board members, that's the young one. You you've done a great job. Sometimes, uh, you know, like, you 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 give everybody the chance. So you don't, I want to say this publicly, you've done a wonderful job. But you you already got to keep apologizing to the to the people in the board. Ever, I think ever on this board want to work. We are on the same highway, going to Mississippi, and nobody is getting off. So we need to stay focused and do our job. And Mr. Triplet, wonderful. He sometimes, I be wanting to put mine in words, boom, he come out with it. So I ain't got to say nothing. But I mean, I just listen. So I don't have to be the president or the secretary or none of that. I want to be part of the change. We got to continue to focus and learn one another. That's the main goal. Now, I'm trying to get this in, cause my phone is cutting again, and nobody in my house but me. And Steven Warner is on TV, so I know he can't help me. So I I cut off at the end, you know, my phone went out. Okay?
All right, I got you. Just keep doing an awesome job. Thank you, Trustee Buchanan.
Madam President.
Yeah, you done it.
Thank you. Secretary Triplet, you have a floor.
The work floor, the the work session discussion, you know, it kind of, um, like you said, in in our in our M A S B trainings and and the things that as we learn and as we go and as we grow. Um, you know, sometime you'll be on the four side, sometime you'll be on the three side, and hopefully the four side is for what's right. Um, the work session being that this is a new board, and I don't know if anybody has been paying any attention prior to us having these work sessions. We have had people that, um, when we have our public comments, um, at the beginning of an act, and you only can speak on the board agendas, there would be never be any comment. Now you are seeing people coming and speaking in that portion of the act of 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 the agenda because they are informed. I also think that this board is new. Um, like we said, the last time, we had almost five steps a minute that we needed to approve because of so many things that we're learning as a board. This is no put down of anybody in particular or any or or the board itself, a new board, you know, a new first time president, you know. Um, I think that the the work sessions, um, I don't think that, first of all, we have really developed our committee meetings in the manner in which our bylaws, um, say that the committee should be. That's another question on another day when we when we go into our um, retreat for discussion. Um, when people come out of committee meetings, um, and they give their report, those those reports are not in depth enough for us to make decisions. Um, in my, in my professional observation, um, when we go into our committee meetings, um, I I think that there's a a kind of like a gray area as the roles of who's the Board of Educa- what the Board of Education responsibilities are and what central administration is, who's who and what's what. We go into committee meetings and they present. You know, we're chairman of these various committees. And like I said, I do have some concerns that we will be able to discuss at the retreat. The work sessions give us an opportunity when people come out for us to ask questions as a board. And I think that it 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 only strengthens us. So we went into this and we came into this, we said we would do it. I don't know if we said a half a year, we revisited afterwards, but just to pop out out of the blue to say, um, we don't need work sessions anymore, um, and because I'm not gonna rubber stamp. You know, I'm not rubber stamping. And I want to know. And I think that people, you know, this is not about individuals, it's not about people. It 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 it's about business, you know. And so being a new board member, I think the work sessions, these discussions, yeah, it might be long, but if you can give, if if you can give nine to ten hours a month to the people that went out of the pandemic to vote for you, to give them an opportunity to have a voice and give them an opportunity to hear and see what we're doing, you know, I think that that's a disservice to the people of this community. And I know that you all have watched this pattern that now people are having their questions at the beginning as it relates to agenda items. So I know you can see that change. And so again, I stand strong with it. I don't think that we are strong enough in our newness um as a Board of Education. There's still things that we're learning along the way. We're 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 depending strongly on counsel at this particular time in this forming and storming season and to just transition out the blue. Um I don't think that we're we're sharp enough and crisp enough yet to make that transition. And uh I'm just gonna say as a new board member um that it really does help me. You know, when I get ready to come in and they present something from their committees and we'd be able to ask those questions because we're not in the committee meetings and we don't know what's going on. And we have to be honest that there is not a report prior to an in-depth report prior to from either committee chairperson or any committee people that goes out to the board in this entirety. And so we pop up here that night, we get a two-minute or three-minute presentation, and then next, you know, we're gonna do this and then be baldy on major things. I think we need to, I think we need to um reconsider and think about it. But that's my position. And so for it to be a report, are we saying that we want this to be, or that this report is already going to be on the agenda for voting next week? When I see the board report, B two, is that the work session report that we are gonna have on the agenda next week for us to vote?
So as it stands, it was on the agenda for four twenty. So I just took the same resolution and tabled it to this meeting so that we could have that conversation this meeting and potentially vote next.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, may I please speak?
You have the floor, Trustee Bowen.
Um I was against us going to two meetings in the beginning. Um I believe by us doing this and operating under the board norms and the board's policy of no surprises at the table. Um this would be efficient for us to go to one meeting. We have our committee meetings and we would be, you know, if we need to enact that our reports get emailed out, we should do that. We also have those recorded for board members. So if they want to take the time as we do with the classes that we take, um we have more than enough time to watch those court meetings. Um also, you can communicate with the chairs without violating the Open Meetings Act um by contacting the chairs if we have any questions. So I think by ending the work sessions would allow us to be efficient as a board and operate and do what we are designed meant to do. Um and that's why I would like this to go on the agenda for next week, well, next, right, next week.
So I just wanna add a sidebar. Um I know that conversation about the committees, uh Treasurer Creighton, and I was actually gonna bring it up in new business, but it kind of falls into this conversation. She sent a training that she wanted to look into us um taking, and it was actually about uh committee, committee, committee um meetings and how to be effective in committee meetings. I can't find the actual title. So um I have reached out to M A S B about a training, potential training for our board retreat, which I'm planning, um where we'll provide more information on. And so that was one of the topics that I asked whether or not he was knowledgeable in training us on per her um request or inquiry into that. So um I know that there was conversation about the committee reports and the meetings and how we're running them and and looking at what that looks like at our um next board retreat. But I wanted to just add a sidebar to that, that I actually check, I'm checking into that as a potential training for the board. Um and so hopefully, you know, that's something that will help us to ensure that we're being more, most effective in our committee meetings for the for the knowledge of a full board as well. And so thank you, Treasurer Creighton, for that suggestion. I was gonna mention it later, but it kind of fits in in conversation here.
You know, President, President Robinson, and 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 I heard uh Trustee Bowens uh little shady comment about, we we can look at the, we can look at the uh the videos of the meeting, just like we attend classes. You know, um as it relates to the Board of Education, M A S B, and I, it, that's all good too. But again, you know, I stand what I stand on and you stand on what you stand on, but we ain't gonna throw no shade up through here about nobody taking no classes because I'm gonna definitely take classes every time I get an opportunity. So again, I I I I have my stand on what I feel as it relates to the work session. But if I end up on the five or six one, it's good because whatever it is, we still gonna have governance, oversight and accountability and that T to be determined. That's goat. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, one second. So just to provide clarification from my comment, the training that Treasurer Creighton suggested was CBA three eighty and its effective committee structures. And so I did forward that to the same individual that did our superintendent's training. Um I want to ensure that we have an established relationship with one person that can get to know our board and kind of do our trainings for us. And so I'm awaiting feedback on whether that's the training that he can actually provide. And then go ahead, Trustee Rocket, you have the floor.
I was just gonna suggest, maybe you could read our board norms again and the seven uh uh skills of collaboration. If you would read those again, please. We're running, we're running a meeting.
And so I don't have a problem at any point. If the board does not object, I'll read these at the drop of a hat. But I want to go ahead and allow Treasurer Creighton to um provide her comment. Treasurer Creighton, did you have a quick comment or do you want?
Yeah, no, just a quick one. Um Cindy Holmes emailed regarding the topic that you talked about with the effective committee structure. And Debbie Starr, I guess, um is that person. So I can forward you this email, but I just wanted that to be on the record. Cindy Holmes and Debbie Starr.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. So our um Liz, can you go up a little bit for me? So we will treat each other with respect. We will listen to learn. We will refrain from side conversations. We will use our time wisely, starting and ending our meetings on time. We will challenge ideas, not people. We will ask questions when in doubt. There will be no surprise at the board table. We will practice the seven norms of collaboration. And then the seven norms of collaboration are pausing, paraphrasing, posing questions, putting ideas on the table, providing data, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive intent. Um so those are the norms that we utilize and I'm not sure if anyone else. Go ahead, Vice President. I can't, go ahead.
Um so I I I'm doing the um conversation and um you know, sitting back and listening and um thinking about it here in the past few weeks. Let me know if you all can hear me because I'm in the mountains. But um and sitting here thinking about the whole conversation, um maybe we can compromise on something because I think it would be really effective if we, um I do believe in, you know, being effective and efficient. Um and maybe state around the country at, when, you know, boards hold meetings, maybe we can look at maybe host holding.
You you broke up a little bit, Vice President Bradley, but I think you were saying.
Yeah, I was saying that we should probably look at either doing, you know, uh one meeting uh every other month or doing two meetings every month or every other month or doing um having a uh work session at the beginning of the month and then doing our regular session at the end of the month. Um if that, you know, if that's a compromise, I do feel that one meeting is good because of, you know, we do have our committee meetings, but if we can find a little ground, I think that would be something that we can think about.
So I think you, I think what you were saying is potentially, you were saying looking at uh looking into potential other options for the meeting. Um.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Looking at, uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that feedback, Vice President Bradley. I think I've had um an opportunity to hear. Um and so I understand that this, this is a heated topic, I really do. Um and so I, you know, I I know that Trustee Bowens wants um to go to to one meeting because he he requested that it be placed on the agenda. And I know that um Treasurer Creighton and Secretary Triplet have spoken directly for um keeping it the same way. But then there's other trustees that haven't necessarily expressed one way or the other. And so.
Madam President.
Um, one, one second. Um, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, can we table this so it won't be on the agenda? I know tabling again is crazy. But let's table this so it won't be on the agenda next week. And let's discuss this at the retreat.
I think that's an awesome idea, Trustee Bowens. Um so what you're suggesting is that and we don't, we don't, um, you know, I'm creating the agenda for for next week. And so it has yet to be formulated, so it wouldn't necessarily um require a vote. But you're saying, and this was your particular que- request to place this on the agenda. What I'm hearing that you're saying is that you are withdrawing the request to vote on this particular item and would like to discuss our meetings at our upcoming retreat and then potentially reconsider this at a later date.
Yes, because Trustee Creighton's, I guess, stated about effective workshops and everything. So if we just have a retreat where we discuss all of that and moving forward, we'll be able to go from there.
Okay, any uh any insight on that? I I like that idea. Um I think that we're, we're all kind of torn on this conversation. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam President. I was gonna say, I'm sorry. Uh I I I do agree with uh Trustee Bowens. Let's do it for retreats and that way we can uh go ahead and um, you know, move forward with our meeting. But also I wanted to say, I did take that um CBA three eighty, um effective committee structure. Um I think back in December or when it was, I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so can you look at your, look in your email vault and see if the links to those documents are still active? And if you have that PowerPoint that they provide? Yeah, get that sent to us and that'd be awesome. So I, unless someone else.
I'll agree with uh Trustee Bowen that we table it and then we can just discuss it in our retreat.
Okay, okay. So I'll, now, um because as stated, it was originally a request from Trustee Bowens. He's asked multiple times about putting it on the agenda for vote. It's okay. No, I didn't mean it as, that wasn't shade. I'm sorry. No one else has specifically requested it outright. And so with you saying that you are withdrawing your request to vote on that at this time, then I won't have it placed on the agenda for next week. And it's something that we can look into um at our upcoming work session. And I just want to thank everyone that's provided um feedback on this conversation. And so there was, you know, we didn't really know where the four or the three was gonna lie. But I do want to say that I appreciate and value Trustee Bowens for ensuring that um how we proceed moving forward is is a way that benefits everyone's concerns. And we can kind of have that conversation and figure out what um that looks like moving forward. So thank you all for the conversation. So I am looking at dates for um our upcoming work session and those discussion topics and things of that nature. I want to try to have it this month. Um so I will follow up with you all on what that's gonna look like. And if not, the end of this month, early June, but I'm really trying for this month. So I'll update you guys as soon as possible. So moving along with the agenda, the next item for discussion is the Financial Recovery Agreement. We met with, we met and discussed this in closed session with um our attorney. And so um we've had negotiations with um the Department of Treasury for quite a bit of time regarding the financial recovery agreement. And I know that there was some insight that was provided in our previous um closed session. But I just wanted to give members of the board an opportunity to provide their insights on this topic. If there's any conversation or discussion to be had um that you haven't already provided to me. I did provide you all with a sample statement that I'm planning to release about this particular topic next week. Um and so if anyone has any insights or or input that they'd like to provide during this meeting, this is the opportunity to provide it. Okay, so hearing none. Um if you have not had an an opportunity to, I know that today specifically, I sent you all many emails. Um if you have not had an opportunity to review the email that I sent you, I did send you one with an example statement that I planned to make next week um on behalf of the Board of Education. And so I wanted to, you know, see if anyone had any suggestions for any additions for that particular statement, any concerns about the statement. So please ensure that you um check your email for that. And so this is something that I am planning to read at our next meeting regarding the final agreement. So thank you all for effective board meeting. Um so far as it relates to board business, we're gonna move it right along to Dr. Townsill for Graduation Alliance. Dr. Townsill, you have the floor.
Copy. Hello, everybody. Uh so I just found out the reason why this uh agenda looks crazy because I have it portable on my screen and I accidentally hit a button. So don't disregard those lines. Uh Graduation Alliance, this was carried over from April. Uh we discussed briefly that Graduation Alliance um is an opportunity to support some of our most needy secondary students here in the district, uh specifically young people who are at risk of dropping out or who have dropped out. Um I had an opportunity, as a matter of fact, I met with a parent who said, you know, Dr. Townsill, that would be a great resource for my baby because my kid needs that additional support or my kid has dropped out, my kid is looking to reengage. And I do believe this is a game changer for us. Um I will be bringing to the board on next month. Um a staff report and it states um the Michigan twenty-three A dropout recovery program. Reason for consideration, the Board of Education recognizes the need to provide alternative means uh when students achieve the goals of the district. This program is to provide a regular and vocational educational opportunity for eligible students, which would include students who have been expelled, referred by a court or pregnant or a parent where previously a dropout or determined to be at risk of dropping out. The facts and analysis is the contract from Graduation Alliance Incorporated um states that they will provide the district a policy and operations manual, instructional model, attendance policy, student services, and how program exceptions are managed. Graduation Alliance will also provide an account portal for the district to monitor the program. They will offer tutoring, case management, and other tools needed to help our students graduate. The policy references twenty-three seventy educational options. And the recommended action for next week is that the Ben Harbor Area School Board of Education approved the contract for the Graduation Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Townsill. Are there any questions for Dr. Townsill regarding Graduation Alliance? I know we've had it. You've been pre-messaging it for a couple months. And so I'm excited to see that we're at a place where we're trying to get this approved. Um, does anyone have any additional questions currently regarding Graduation Alliance for Dr. Townsill?
Robinson, I may have short-term memory. Was, what was the cost with this?
Uh I believe, uh if I go back and read, I think it was five hundred dollars um per student a month. Um and that's over the course of an academic year. Um however, well, we receive money from the state for each pupil, per pupil, and that directly pays for the uh student. So there's no, that will be reimbursed, so to speak.
Okay.
Dr. Townsill.
Yes.
If um if we agree, how soon can they start? If we agree, how soon can they start?
Uh, great question. Uh, once we get all of the resources that we need, I'm I'm gonna try to get this thing off and running um by summer, you know, get our kids involved and enrolled. Um, it's a personalized track. Uh, so we're gonna try to push the go button immediately, um if approved by the Board of Education.
President Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. One second, Treasurer Creighton. Trustee Bowens. It's okay. In the in the Graduation Alliance link on the agenda, if you take a look at it um, under T, it has funding and reimbursement and actually covers the cost per student. So um this is the actual information, if you want to take more look, more, a deeper look at it before we vote next week. And it's under T, the funding and reimbursement.
Thank you. I remember the cost. I just forgot and sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
Thanks. I I'm gonna actually take a look at this. I um, that's what I was gonna ask. I had some, I was gonna ask for for information on on that, but I'll just take a look at this and then if I have other questions, you know, I'll ask next week.
Thank you.
Thanks again. The last thing I want to say about this, uh Board of Trustees. Uh, we're remember there's been a a high school that's approved, a charter that was approved by Central Michigan University that uh shall be coming to the district probably as early as this fall, and their um goal is to provide dropout recovery. Um, so they're in direct competition with our young people. I do have a philosophy that the young people in our district, I want to serve them. I want them to get their degrees, excuse me, their diplomas from Benton Harbor Area Schools. I want to claim them, educate them so they can go off and be successful in our global society. Uh, but please, any questions, don't hesitate to forward them to us prior to next week. Um, and hopefully, you know, with the blessing of the board, we can do some great work for our young people.
President Robinson.
Yes, Secretary Triplet, you have the floor.
I was looking at, I was looking at some data and I was looking at the um, some data that was submitted to the Board of Education as it relates to uh the dropout rates and um where we are um as it relates to our dropout rate. And so when I look at this, uh, the standard reimbursement rates for a hundred or more students, it'd be four hundred dollars per month per student. So that would be um uh if a hundred students come back into this program, that would be forty thousand dollars a month. That would go uh would would be, would be a part of this um this piece. Am I not correct?
Yes, you are correct. So if you think of it this way, uh, Trustee, uh, excuse Secretary Triplet, um, we get roughly eight thousand dollars per pupil. Um, so of that eight thousand dollars, if we're paying five hundred and fifty dollars, uh that's still a a profit on our end to uh for us as a district.
Yeah, and to get those kids, but once they come back and they're back in there and they're in this program, we don't, they don't stay in that program unless we reclaim them. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, they become a Benton Harbor Area School student. They're just serviced through Graduation Alliance, but they're still our students.
So where would this, where, okay, so with this right here, my mind thinking, would this would this be something that would be aligned with um our um, it used to be the um Dream Academy.
Yes.
Um, I can't remember exactly what the name of the 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 new name of. Yeah, Cape, the school's changed so.
Do you think of it as a multi-tiered system of support? Our 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 traditional students go to the high school, young people that need targeted support go through the Cape. Young people that need that intense support would be Graduation Alliance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, let me ask you one more question, Doc. So if, say for instance, if we just found somebody that dropped, I mean, that that we dropped the ball on or, you know, not pointing fingers, though, we get this student back and for whatever reason, okay, I I I I got out of it because I didn't log on, I got overwhelmed and different things, but we find that this student can still function in the regular um setting.
Yeah, get off your clothes.
Gotta mute your mic, Miss Samantha. Gotta mute your microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, so we find, we find some students, you know, that we probably lost along the way, especially in COVID, it might be, it's various reasons um as to why they may not, you know, have have stayed with us. So if we find a student that say, well, you know, I want to come back, but I want to go back to the high school and stuff, but they'll still be categorized as Graduation Alliance, would they be able to monitor them in that setting as well?
Not necessarily. I think it's case by case. If we, you know, get a young person or enroll back in school um after being dropped out, we just have to assess them and see what's the best fit for them. Uh, in a lot of cases, some of our young people that go the Graduation Alliance route or even the Cape route are overaged and under accredited. Um, so I know in some cases, you know, you probably don't want an eighteen-year-old freshman in a class with a fourteen-year-old kid. Opportunities for our kids.
Okay, I got you. Thank you so much. I got you.
Dr. Townsend.
Yes, ma'am.
One last question, with uh the students that graduate from Graduation Alliance, would they, they would still walk with the the seniors at the the traditional Benton Harbor High School, right? Graduation class, right? Like a separate graduation.
That that's correct. We have an opportunity to design it the way as best for us. Um, if we want to keep it separate, we can, and we want to make it all one, we can. I think the goal is to make them a part of the family, you know. If they go to Graduation Alliance, get that diploma, they're still a tiger because they went through Benton Harbor Area School, and that's the only secondary program we have is a tiger.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Okay, um, I I I just had a aha moment, and I just wanted to say that um, or at least, yeah, trying to make a comment that um, I think as Ms. Rocket, Trustee Rocket Martin was asking her question or make her comment, um, it reminded me of uh when I worked um in the district, I remember having students um that participated in third parties, um if you will, GD programs. And so it sounds like that this Graduation Alliance would be similar to like, I think they have like the Bridge Academy or they have programs through Conexus and other um private entities that, you know, if our, the individual um receives um a diploma or GD, then they could walk and participate in our graduation. Because I remember having a young lady that was in her thirties that completed her GD, and she walked um with the graduating class, I think of like two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and so um, Dr. Townsend, um, I think, uh, am I on um the right page? Is this something like that, similar to that? This is the actual company that'll provide the service so that it doesn't overwhelm our um counseling department to do that?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. There comes good staff. Um, um, what what was I gonna say? Bridge Academy, you mentioned. This is competition to Bridge Academy. As you know, Bridge Academy was that very in spring and that no longer exists. So now they're scrambling for students, which is why they're looking to open a charter here to be essentially a support for Bridge Academy, but, you know, we're gonna, you know, grab it by the horns and support, serve our young people. Um, and we may have young people in the region that made choice into Graduation Alliance of Benton Harbor uh because of the dropout recovery. Young people drop out all over um the state and all over the country. Um, so why, why can't we be a premier opportunity to support some of our most needy students with regards to academics?
So, um, sorry, Madam President, may I? I I'm sorry, Trust.
You have the floor, Trustee.
Sorry, I was gonna say, I didn't know, Trustee Creighton was done, sorry. Um, two things. Um, where would, what building would this be housed at? And I think I, we need to be careful when we're talking about we have a new charter coming then. Because if I'm correct, Bridge Academy does not have a charter, they're just beginning to charter. So, and if we are still partnering with them, correct?
Not with Bridge Academy. We do have a partnership with Conexus, however.
And Conexus is the fiduciary agent of Bridge Academy.
That is correct, but they have different uh different uh branches underneath, so I just want to be clear on that. So we still work with them with JMG or excuse me, other opportunity like adult education that they provide. Uh, but they're looking to specifically um have a charter school that they're partnering with to provide this specific support.
Okay.
And I think, excuse me, uh, uh, Madam President, I think they have different partnerships and entities too. I think that it's something that we have that, we should have that same option. And that same opportunity to do the same thing, that I think that we can really get more of our kids back under this type of program, and 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 it has a lot to do with the language we market it. Um, um, that, um, you know, that we definitely um do this. So, yeah, I think this is a good move.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet, and and each of the trustees that provided um questions for Dr. Townsend. Um, I'm gonna move right along to position description for the high school restructure plan for athletics. Are those two? That are those two different entities or one in the same?
Those are the exact same thing. It's just, it's just extra information for anyone to read. But let me say this, team. This is important, and the public need to know this as well, too. Ladies and gentlemen, first and foremost, and I'm talking to everyone, uh, the goal is to increase academic achievement, enhance the act education experience for our young people in addition to getting our finances on point. Um, I want to share this information. I did have an opportunity to share this with the Human Resources Committee, but here's the reality. In the last ten years, Benton Harbor High School has had six different principals and three interim principals in the last, since two thousand ten. So we've, we've had six principals and three interns, you know, just trying to figure it out. And my goal is to ensure that this high school is rock solid. And one thing I hear a lot of times, even in the communities, I know we have the incident that happened um just recently, uh, the violence that that kind of happened in the community. I hear that our young people don't have much to do, and I had an opportunity last summer to, you know, to live in the city, you know. And I live in the city now, but I was here all summer last year to just kind of see and feel things out. And I want to ensure that we have a pipeline of enrichment opportunities right here in the district so our young people can stay engaged prior to high school. Um, and I heard of all the wonderful opportunities and enrichment and activities our young people had in the past that don't exist today. Um, so what we looked at was designing a, a, let me go direct to it on my screen, a position called Assistant Director of Athletics and Activities, and I just want to read the rationale on it. Um, and this is information, I'm gonna see if we can do this for every opportunity. This is to be paid completely out of grant, not to touch our general fund, but as I work with the team to design longevity of the high school stability, also while we're looking to bring a principal, we gotta ensure that the pillars we have are strong. Uh, this is expected to be a new position, Assistant Director of Athletics and Student Activities, and here's the rationale. Um, is building capacity, one major aspect in the district turnaround and transformations to build systems that are both capacity building and sustainable and breaking the cycle of high turnover. And starting from the beginning that our district had experienced over the years, we have methodically implemented processes to mitigate the cycle. Moving to structures such as director and assistant director, we minimize the opportunity for institutional and content knowledge gaps. We ensure a viable, healthy pipeline for our district. Additionally, growing our own, revising positions and or developing new positions with intentionality and purpose is key to building a successful or organization. It is our duty to support skilled and knowledgeable individuals in the district to become effective educators for our students. We begin that journey whenever possible within an organization. This position will provide opportunities for growth for those individuals who are qualified to express interest. Whole child student engagement. Benton Harbor Area School follows the Michigan Department of Education ASCD whole school, whole child, whole community model. One of the whole child tenants is each student interschool healthy and learn and practice a healthy lifestyle. Research supports that students engaged in meaningful and interesting activities demonstrate improvement in social settings in turn provide a more well-adjusted child. One year ago, Benton Harbor Area Schools took the initiative to ensure every school in the district was was provided with an art teacher, music teacher, physical education, and health teacher. This new position is an important part of the overall goal of providing our students with healthy and safe additional and alternative activities. Their structure is this, it's recommended that this position of Assistant Director of Athletics and Student Activity report directly to the Athletic Director. This position should work closely with principals and should provide guidance and support to all physical education teachers in the district. However, the ultimate reporting structure will be determined by the superintendent. The key duties, and this is very important, is to be cross-trained with the Athletic Director. And in the event that our Athletic Director, you know, resigns, retires, whatever, we have some institutional knowledge still right here where all the information don't go, we're not building from scratch. Additionally, they will coordinate, supervise, oversee all activities at each school relevant to the position. For example, walkathon, marathons, field days, K twelve P E equipment coordination, coordinated efforts with the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, oversee sports programs, grade K through eight, and engage and liaise with Cape to ensure students' activities have, students have access to Benton Harbor High School activities. Ladies and gentlemen, our goal is to really vertically align, streamline our young people through our pipeline. So not only that we can continue to increase our academics, our athletics, and our arts, we just want to be viable and competitive with the high schools in the area. And I do believe that we have an opportunity to keep our young people engaged from the K level all the way through secondary opportunities as they go off into into scholastic sports, into the different robotics clubs. We have additional person, people keep an eye on it, and also an opportunity to bring back legacy programs that were here in the district in the past. Um, so I wanted to share this with the board, more than happy to get any input. Um, I did hear some institutional knowledge from the past, but uh my goal is to enhance the education experience of our kids. Um, and we want to start at that at the lowest level possible, being kindergarten and move all the way through the high school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Townsend, for clarifying and providing that information on the high school restructure plan for athletics. Um, does anyone have any particular questions for Dr. Townsend regarding the information that he's just presented?
I, Madam President, may I? Um, I I'm glad to see that we have this coming, and it's grant, my two questions. What happens when the grant, and because I, I'm noticing we're getting more and more grant-funded positions. But also, what are we doing? I I see we're creating positions, but when you have teachers that reach out to you saying they have been spending twenty years in the district and they can't afford it because the district is paying low, what are we doing to keep str- stability with our teachers, giving them a livable wage as well as creating new positions? I, it's kind of not a win-win situation. To me, it seems like we're becoming more top-heavy when the ones that are in our classes with our students are struggling to make ends meet. I mean, a teacher just the other day, been with the district for thirty years, told me she got a job offer making more, but she doesn't want to leave. I just, I'm seeing a lot of these grant-funded positions and they're reaching out to me. I don't know. It's just something to think about.
No, I think, I think it's an important point. Um, prior to um our new board members that came on board, we we did complete and maybe I will have um our Chief of Human Resources revisit this at our next HR committee meeting. Uh, we are committed to supporting our teachers who, like you said, been in the district thirty years and not making enough money. We had an opportunity to complete phase one of giving money back to our teachers, teachers that took that ten percent pay cut um that have been frozen on this step. We gave that money back to a percentage of those teachers and we're looking to get back into phase two of that. Um, you know, um, the, unfortunately, you can't use this grant money for teacher raises. I wish you could. But thirty-one A money is at-risk money. Um, that's how do you support at-risk students? We're considered a Title One district where our young people need a lot of support, and I want to ensure that we can keep their schema activated by having them engage in these enrichment opportunities, and I do believe that would translate into academic success. One of my uh philosophies is as climate and culture goes, so goes construction. And as we continue to fix all pillars of the system, I do believe we'll be around for a long time in the future with high academic achievement competitive with local schools in the area. Um, I think there's a question from Mr. Triplet.
Yes, as as I, as I discussed in the uh HR meeting, I, and and I understand, you know, the funding source would be Title One, thirty-one A. And I look at our athletic program and I see all of these things that's going on with our athletic program, or, I mean, just see things, see this being a part of what what are the arts, academic arts in athletics as our foundation. I struggle with the fact, and I, and I do piggyback on what uh um Trustee Bowen said as it relates to with the 31A funding and what have you, they are creative ways for our teachers to be able to, um, have opportunities to make more money, um, to increase their, there are lots of creative ways for that to take place. I struggle with the fact when you say, um, student activities and those types of things, those are, um, at that high school, we have two. How many assistant principals do we have?
We had one this past year.
We had one assistant principal. Um, and so when I look at it, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I, like I said, I, I attended this. I've been in this school district all of my life. We, uh, were a class A school, um, with, um, 2,400 students at Ben Harbor High School. When I entered as a freshman with split session. We had one athletic director. We were in one of the top, um, conferences in the state of Michigan, um, Muskegon, Big Reds, Traverse City, Grand Haven, and all of those different types of schools. And we never had an assistant athletic director. We have 1,500 students in the entire district, 500 students, um, at the high school level. Um, to, you know, I, I definitely want to support your vision and your thoughts. You know, I just don't want to be negative on everything, but I just, you know, for me, it just came up as a red flag. Um, we're not in a conference. We have, um, the, 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 the department has, has, has shrank and I shared with you, we have a, um, uh, a secretary who is being paid under edgy staff, who is a graduate of Ben Harbor High School and has a bachelor's degree. And, uh, and, and Mr. Nick Blue. Um, and we're going to go out and look for an assistant athletic director. You know, I hear, you know, one thing that I got my eye on and I've been watching since I've been on this board, but watching previously. I have definitely paid attention to, um, the citizens and the people in this community and what they bring to the table. And so that's a conversation on another day. But I do struggle with this small division of athletics. I don't, I just, for me, this is just me, that I just don't see the significance. I mean, like when you're talking about K-8, how would we do? I, I, I appreciate, I, I, I like the piece where we're talking about the physical education department, which is a very, very critical piece, is instrumental piece, because when you go in our physical education class, you know, a lot of times you would see students sitting around, students sleep, students not dressing. You know, that, 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 that's been an ongoing situation. How, how does this particular role? What role, would this role, how, how does this role help K-8? What kind of athletics do we have in grades K through, I would say in grades K through six? You know, how is that athletic piece going to, is that just going to have the seventh and eighth grade, which you have a basketball season and, and, and a partial football season? You know, are, are we going to do intramurals? Um, um, what, I mean, what would they do? I, I just haven't seen the development. I just, I, I'm, I'm struggling with it regardless to the funding source. I'm struggling with that position as an assistant athletic director. Um, and I did share that, you know, the district is very, very small and I just don't see the significance. But that doesn't mean that it's not necessary. It's not, it's not something that can be developed, it's something that we can watch. And like, um, Trustee Bowen said, with these, um, with these grant positions, um, when we're looking at these grant positions, are we, what are we doing as it relates to sustainability? Do we have a plan in place? Um, once this grant is gone, do we have a, a plan in place to show how this can be sustained? And how it can carry on once the grant or that money is not available, you know, so.
No, I think that's very important. With regards to the grant, that, that we get those monies every year and it's about being a priority of ours as a district. Um, I do want to share this, two things. The goal is to all hire from within. That's why, uh, part of two is growing our own. We're looking for people within the district. Um, so you just mentioned, um, an outstanding person, I have a great relationship with who does a great job in their department. Um, so you know, it's all about, hey, if people want to, you know, enhance or, you know, uh, enhance their careers, I'm all for it. You know, we want to build Benson Harbor, uh, to where the best days are in front of us. Um, and I'm confident that individuals that I hear that are committed to our young people are going to contribute. Uh, and another thing I want to say about grants, uh, this is a little piece of what we can do within a grant, but that doesn't mean we're spending all, all 31A on this right here. It's just a little sliver. Um, is one little piece, wants to just kind of get up and running, ensure we got some of this low-hanging fruit taken care of. And I want to make sure our young people have something to do right here in the district. I do meet, uh, with, uh, the president of the, uh, Boys and Girls Club Ben Harbor on a monthly basis. And, uh, you know, we're really putting our heads together on how we can support our young people, uh, K-12. You know, getting them engaged summertime, you know, and in, into our buildings, beautiful, beautiful facilities that we have here at the high school, at the Boys and Girls Club. You know, we want our babies here, get them leveled up, educated up, so they can go out and compete in our global society. That's the only agenda. There's no hidden agendas, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody fresh just coming in, we're looking to really get this thing right. So when it's all said and done, when it's time for Dr. Townsend to go, it's better than, I, I left it better than I found it. That's the number one goal.
I, I do have a question because we did discuss earlier, and this is a grant, um, position. Am I not correct?
Yeah, we'll be looking to fund it out of the probably 31A Title I, but we get that monies every year. That doesn't run out for us. We're a Title I district.
Okay, so, so, so by the board approving or accepting grants, are they approving grant-funded positions in and around in a, in a, in a, in a roundabout way? Because if the board members are the positional oversight of all monies, including grants, how are grant-funded positions exempt from board approval?
Is, is, it's so what the guidance that we got from our attorney, I reread it. It said, um, general fund, because it doesn't affect the general fund and because grants, so for example, we got the $3 million for literacy. Um, and that calls for us to have an assist, uh, an assistant director of literacy. Um, because that was approved through the grant, we're allowed to do that. That generally does not go to board meetings. And I've had multiple, probably, you know, 20, 30 positions in my previous district as an assistant superintendent, um, completely through 21H grant funded climate and culture coaches did not require board approval. And we are generally use the, and we also was a part of Troon and the same attorneys in Niola as well. Um, so our goal is not to buck any policy. Our goal is to do great work for our young people.
So the attorney that you got this information from is the board's attorney, Attorney Gardner?
I think this is from Clark Hill.
Clark Hill? All right. Thank you.
Copy.
Any other questions regarding, uh, position description? I had a question, Dr. Townsend. I noticed that the, the description that was open doesn't designate a salary range. Is that dependent upon the person's experience or is that not determined until they're hired? Cause that's not.
Probably just not on here, but we generally, we have a, a range or a salary bar here internally. It's just not here for some reason. There's a proposal, so.
Okay.
But we're happy to share that information.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other questions for Dr. Townsend, we will proceed with the agenda. Um, were you done with your section, Dr. Townsend?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So we, we will go next to business and finance. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. The first topic is 2021 millet rates, reason for board considerations. Each year, the Board of Education approves the milit rates for school property taxes. This evening, actually next week, it'll be recommended that the board levy the same milit rates in 2021 as the rates that were levied in last, the last calendar year and tax year. In the past several years, the military was approved by the board typically in early June. And approval next week will enable this staff to communicate the milit rates to local units of government that collect the district's summer taxes earlier to allow them to have the property bills, property tax bills generated in a timely manner. And each year, there's a possibility, uh, albeit small, but there is a possibility that the district will be subject to what's called a headly milage reduction due to property values rising faster than the rate of inflation. If that occurs, a revised 2021 milit rate for the operating mileage and/or the 2017 sinking fund milage rate would then be recommended to the board for approval in June. I did contact legal counsel to see if perhaps a resolution next week could be written in a way that factors in the possibility of headly rollback. So only one, a board action would be required for setting milit rates. And you can see that there's no policy reference and the recommended action next week would be that the board approve the milit rates, uh, as listed below.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions from Mr. Johnson? Regarding staff report F1 concerning 2021 milit rates?
So why are there, they're not, why, why isn't there a policy, uh, reference on there?
None has been proposed by Niola.
Thank you.
And there is no policy pertaining to summer property tax collection.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
President Robinson, may I speak?
Go ahead, Trustee Bowen.
Do we have data on, I know some residents, um, feel if their kids don't go to the school district, um, they can opt out of paying taxes to the local district? Do we have any data on what that number is locally?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. Are you asking, well, if you could perhaps refine the question, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Say, for example, I own a, I own a house and I pay taxes. I can go to the county and I'm probably not thinking of the word. But I can say I don't want to pay taxes and the county will give me a paper to fill out. I don't want to pay taxes to Benton Harbor area schools. Do we have any data on that?
No, and I'm not familiar with such a, a possibility.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson for staff report F1? All right, Mr. Johnson, you can proceed to staff report F2.
Thank you. This is regarding monthly financial reports. Each month, a set of financial reports is provided to the Board of Education. And next week will be recommended that the board approves the payment of the funds for, uh, March 2021. Policy reference to 6470 payment of, of claims and can see the amounts listed below. This set of financial reports has been expanded. Uh, we are now up to 19 financial reports for the month of March. And you can see that there's a table of contents, uh, pages in, and you'll see a few new reports highlighted with blue with notes that say new in the status column. These are new this month. May I be responding? Any questions you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions regarding staff report F2 concerning the monthly financial reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to the procurement card resolution. And if anyone has any additional questions, if you look at the reports and you have clarifications, just send those to us and we'll ensure we provide those clarifications prior to next meeting.
Madam President.
Oh, go ahead, Vice President Bradley.
Um, are we making the motions for those or are we, um, skipping those?
So that would be next week, because we're in that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. The next topic is procurement cards. And procurement cards, sometimes called purchasing cards or P-cards, provide users with convenience, efficiency, and also provides the district with a better internal controls over the credit cards. For fax analysis, for several years, the district has had, uh, a few credit cards that have been used for district-related purchases. Uh, many public school districts and city governments have transitioned away from credit cards, so on over to purchasing cards. Next week, it will be recommended that the board, uh, make this change too. Some of the benefits of P-cards over credit cards are increased accountability, better controls, increased efficiency. And also there's a potential for an annual financial rebate depending on the district's total spend for the calendar year for all of the district P-cards combined. Policy reference to 6423 use of credit slash debit cards.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Johnson regarding staff report F3?
Yes, uh, Mr. Johnson, who, um, who would, um, be issued these cards? Who would be monitoring? I mean, how does this, how, how would this be, how would this be laid out? What position would, would, would quantify you or qualify you being, getting a P-card and being able to use a P-card?
So the positions by way of example would be certain central office administrative positions, certain clerical positions. Uh, building principals would be offered the opportunity to have a purchase card. Uh, and these cards would be issued in the district's name, but also as the employee's name. And we're planning to provide that list to the finance committee at the next finance committee meeting.
And once you provide it to the finance committee, it will be given to the board as well. Am I not correct?
We can certainly provide to the board, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, I, I, I approve of this idea. I can remember as a building principal, we were issued credit cards so that we could, um, you know, if we needed paper right away, uh, copy paper or whatever, we could buy those things without having to wait weeks and weeks and weeks if things approved. So, uh, you know, I, I thank you that you're bringing us into the future, into the 21st century. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson regarding staff report F3?
Um, I was just, just want to make a quick comment that, uh, it's something we already kind of do over in the trucking industry with like, uh, P-cards and stuff. So I'm kind of, you know, be a pretty good, um, that we switch over to.
Okay, you broke up quite a bit, Vice President Bradley, but what I did hear is that you all do it in the trucking industry. So you're, I think you say you're excited that it's something that we're going to check into, I believe, is what you were saying.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, awesome. Any other questions, comments or concerns for Mr. Johnson regarding the P-cards, staff report F3?
Um, I just wanted to say, President Robinson, may I say something?
You have the floor, Treasure Creighton.
I was just sit back like, oh my God, I, I did this presentation and I didn't even realize that Mr. Johnson had a formal presentation. So I just wanted to apologize for prematurely explaining that, but I thank you for, um, making that clear.
Thank you, Treasure Creighton. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll move forward to the revenue generating options staff report F4. And this was a document that we emailed out, I believe in the month of March. Um, we anticipated we would be discussing it in April and then actually decided to bring it to the May meeting. So you have the floor, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. The reason for board consideration, the, this district has a significant amount of long-term debt. And all of the associated debt service costs for that long-term debt are currently being paid from the district's general fund. Fax analysis, the district currently is obligated to pay between about 550,000 and 700,000 plus per year from the general fund to repay the long-term debt. This creates a strain on the general fund budget, particularly with declining enrollment. Most Michigan public school districts that have long-term debt like we do, pay for their debt retirement costs using a property tax revenue source from what's called a designated millage, specifically a debt retirement millage. Ben Harbor area school also has no such millage to pay for the significant debt service cost every year. And I've attached a, a table that shows several revenue generating options. And it compares and contrasts these alternative ways to generate additional revenue for the district. There's no policy reference, and this is presented for additional questions from the board and discussion. I do, you have about a 10 or 12 slide PowerPoint presentation, given the late hour though. Um, perhaps it would be best if I did forego that presentation this evening, could certainly email it to the board subsequently.
Okay, that would be, that would be awesome if you can email it to us. And I know I sent the table out that had those options. We represented the options in our committee meeting and decided to bring all, I believe, seven of them, if I'm not mistaken, to the board. Um, so that the board can discuss those, those options as a whole. Um, and so does anyone, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to take a look at that information when it was sent, I believe in March, if I'm not mistaken. If you have any questions for Mr. Johnson regarding the, the revenue generating options?
I, I, I just think it's great that we even looking in this direction, you know? And I appreciate, uh, the, the finance committee and, uh, Mr. Johnson for even presenting this so that we can start really, really looking at, uh, the options that we have and giving us some type. so that we can start really, really looking at the options that we have and giving us some type of idea how we need to move forward to help eliminate this deficit. But thank you so much.
Thank you. And if we could just click on the revenue generating options so we can take a quick look at the table. So and then zoom in really quickly, just to ensure everyone is clear. So Mr. Johnson has laid out each of the options, options A through G, and then he's provided a description for you. Approval is required. He's also provided pros and cons on the the next pages. So he has done the labor and research to to make this as simple and as understandable as possible for the board for what those options are and things that we should be considering in looking at the options. So if you all could take an opportunity to further look at those, if there's questions that you have that you want to provide to Mr. Johnson after looking at the presentation that he's prepared, feel free to get those sent over. But we were really excited about these options and wanted to share them with the board. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Johnson regarding this information or any comments?
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead, trustee Bones.
Mr. Johnson, which one would you think, in your personal opinion, that might be never mind, I'll be told, sorry.
We tried to ask him the same question. He his answer was that he he thought a lot of them were good ideas. So he's provided the pros and cons for each of those.
I didn't want to put him on the gotcha moments.
Yeah, we couldn't get a set. We wanted him to give us the easiest answer, but he he did the research and he's provided, you know, all of the details and the pros and cons for each. So he wants us to kind of do the labor at looking at the options that he's presented. So all of these are the ones that he feels would be good for us for various reasons.
Can we use, can we use a combination of options as well? Is that recommended?
Mr. Johnson?
It's an excellent question. In fact, yes, one of the options on this table is, in fact, a combination option.
Yeah, because I was looking at, I I went across and I looked at it as I was looking at it. There was like only one option that would, when the question was that would this result in a millage increase for taxpayers? So I'm just looking at it from all different kinds of angles, and it was on one of those options, but, you know, like the energy bond. But is there something we can do, stability bond, can we do stability bond and energy bonds? And how would it be, you know, what would that do to at that particular time to do that type of stuff? But thank you. I know how to study now.
Is op- option G is the combination, correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
And one clarification, the list of options A through G are presented in alphabetical order, except option G, which is the combination option. They're not necessarily presented in order of a recommend administrative recommendation. It's just an alphabetical list. And then way over on the far right, the two NR, option NR1 and NR2 stand for non-revenue generating options. Those are cost-saving options.
And then at the bottom, he also has questions for each of those particular options as well.
Madam President.
Go ahead, trustee Rockett-Martin.
Is this, is this this chart something that we can also go over in our board retreat?
Yes, ma'am, but I I'm not sure that Mr. Johnson would be present, but we can we can definitely have a conversation regarding the chart.
Okay, I would like to because it is kind of difficult to see it on the screen. But I'm interested in seeing how we can better serve us.
Maybe you can come, maybe you can come into our retreat and give us a half an hour, hour presentation. I don't know how much that would cost us, but maybe you can come into our retreat and give us a quick presentation.
Say it, mom's the word. Okay, thank you, everybody. Johnson, we thank you so much for doing this. We we looked at the chart and it was, you know, at at first glance, it can be overwhelming, the amount of options that were there. And so we really did, myself, Vice President Bradley and Treasurer Creighton, I think we probably asked them multiple times, which one do you suggest? He was like, you know, I think they all are good options and the pros and cons are there. So, you know, and we ultimately decided, well, let's just bring them all to the board and let the board look at them. So thank you so much for doing the the research and and providing such an in-depth chart for us to consider all of the variables of these options.
President Robinson, do we have a timeline that we need to try to run this before the voters or no?
Mr. Johnson?
There's not a a time limit per se. However, every year that passes with us paying for these costs for the debt service of the general fund is additional strain on the general fund. We also are constrained by a limited number of election dates per year and the amount of time that's required to call an election and allow the proper process to proceed in timely manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions for him, we're going to move right along to staff report F5, the enhanced deficit elimination plan.
Thank you. Reason for board consideration of Michigan Department of Treasury representative requested a different form of board resolution for the EDEP, the Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan that the board approved back in January of this year. Fax analysis, the board approved the multi-year debt back in January. And during a routine monthly call with Treasury representatives now last week, a request was received for a different version of the previously approved EDEP. I have provided a copy in the board packet of the resolution that was provided or approved a little approximately a year ago by the board, but updated to include the date for the most recent EDEP provision. I'm still waiting for the EDEP template, EDEP resolution template from Department of Treasury. But I'm optimistic that it will be just like the one that the draft one I've attached. The actual EDEP spreadsheet is the same as the version back that was approved back in January. With one exception, the new version of the spreadsheet includes the actual rather than previously estimated June 30, 2020 fund balance. And although the EDEP conservatively projects that the district will recover from its long general fund deficit in 2029, it's increasingly likely that the district will emerge from the deficit much earlier. In June of this year, a budget revision will be prepared for 2021 fiscal year, the year-end budget revision for board approval. And the June budget revision will include an updated fund balance projection for June 30, 2021. And there's no policy reference.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions regarding staff report F5? All right, hearing now, we're gonna thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your presentation. Proceed to Human Resources, Ms. Gail.
Hello, everybody. I would just like to see if we can have the PowerPoint. Thank you. We all know that Benton Harbor area schools has been plagued by high turnover rates for well over a decade. So we would like to share some good news at this time and the data that supports it. Please, please, can you go back, please? I I will let you know when to click. I would appreciate it. Turnover is a metric and is expressed using a formula that tracks the number of employee separations over a period of time. Slide, please. Here we have the district turnover rates per school year from 2018 until now. And this is the information that I'm able to stand behind. Unfortunately, our records are not complete for the previous years. The data for the current year, 2020, 2021, is of course not complete, but we have included all separations as of April 29, including those which will be presented today in a staff report. We see that the turnover rate has decreased from 2018, which was at 38% at the beginning of 28, 2018, 19 school year to 12% at present. Now, as we consider these numbers, it is important to note how the pandemic has affected us as well. Out of these employees, out of those employees who left the district this year, please note that 11 of them did so for a reason directly related to COVID-19. If you would, please focus on that, the last bar for 2021 school year, you will see that if we were to adjust the numbers due to the pandemic, slide please. The turnover rate would have dropped by half, down to 6%. And this is just for illustrative purposes. The important point here is that even without this adjustment, the data shows that our turnover rate has improved by over 68% over the last two years. I should mention that this represents a conservative way of data interpretation. What I mean by that is that the percentages that we just saw represent the turnover rate as it relates to the number of positions at our district. The actual turnover rate tracks the separations as they relate to the number of employees during that time. And for that, we would need to review the number of job vacancies we had. Slide, please. At the beginning of 2018, 19 school year, we actually had 48 vacancies. And this dropped down to 25 vacancies the following year. And you will recall that at the beginning of this school year, our number of vacancies actually went down to zero. Now, if we account for that, we see that the actual turnover rates, slide please, were much higher for the last two years. It shows that in two years only we went from a 50% turnover rate down to 12%. This is quite significant. It shows the actual improvement of 76%. Now, if we review the reasons for separations, which employees provided in their exit interview, we see that those went down steadily as well. Slide, please. The colors represent the years. So we see that the blue color is, oops, we have an extra zero up there. But the year is 2018, 19 for blue. And the first grouping of bars are resignations, and we see that they declined each year, and so did the retirements. Last summer, we had some reductions in force. That's what RIF stands for due to COVID-related restructuring. I do want to mention that a lot of these reasons were unable to control. For example, people have life events, they go on to pursue further education, or they move across the country, get married, and so on. Nevertheless, understanding these reasons helps us to plan our retention strategy. So how did we achieve this improvement? Slide, please. This was and continues to be a huge collaborative effort across all departments where we are very intentional about reducing our turnover. And here are some of the strategies we utilized. While some of these may be basic, they were definitely lacking in our district. So that's where we started. First, we're being very attentive to our employees' needs and concerns. Click, please. We also made sure to clearly communicate job expectations and implement fair evaluations. A click, please. Of course, employees need to have the training necessary to do their jobs well. And you may or may not be aware, but through the Department of Teaching and Learning, we have implemented an amazing array of professional development courses to support our teachers and staff. Click, please. We have also applied current policies and procedures consistently and equitably. A click, please. And finally, we strive to offer superb customer service to our employees and demonstrate to them their value to the district. Now, what we see from the data is that we have made a significant improvement when it comes to employee turnover. However, our work is not done. While the numbers are definitely trending in the right direction, our current rate of turnover at 12% is still considered quite high. Slide, please. To that end, we would like to share some of our goals. We are looking to position Benton Harbor area schools as the employer of choice in southwest Michigan. And secondly, click please. We're looking to reduce the turnover rate to 4% or lower in the next three years. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. Are there any questions over the Benton Harbor area schools turnover rate presentation?
Yes, Madam President. Yeah, I do have some some questions. I I'm on the HR committee and I've been doing my own research. And so there won't be any surprises at the board table tonight. I look at the percentages and the things that was presented, this right here, this this report wasn't available at the actual meeting. It was a skeleton of it. So I'll just save it towards the end, but I would like to know because some of the information that I requested and some of the information that I got, there were several names that were missing. Also, I I would like to get where you got this data from. I think this data is current. So you probably have this data readily available to support. And I would like to also, when you talk about the percentages of people who have left the district, what percentage of these people are African-American? People of our African-American employees. What percentages of those? Those are something that I would like to see to talk with, because I have some information that I'm looking at here right now. Some people need to fix their face, you online. Um, yeah, so again, I would like to to get that information, but I'm glad that you have this information. It is current and it's updated. So when I send my request, I can get it because you've worked on this and it's ready to go for it.
Absolutely. And just to clarify, Mr. Triplet, you said some something about the names. I was not clear on what you were referring to. Can you just clarify, please? So I make sure that you have the all the information.
No, you you provided me with a list of, and I think we've talked about this before. You you provided me with a master list of who has actually separated from the district.
Oh, so I see what you mean. So since then, we have had several more names, so I added them as I was doing calculations.
Yeah, yeah, you you provided them. And so now that you have this, I'm glad that you have this information right now because now your records are current. And then if I have any questions, you'll be able to assist me.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Okay, any other questions from Ms. Gail regarding the turnover presentation? All right, we're going to move right along to the grant joint presentation.
So a question came up at the late latest Human Resources Committee meeting about the new literacy grant that the district was awarded. And we have shared a brief information on how that affected the staffing. But the committee members wanted to get a little more in-depth information, so I've invited Dr. Shelton to share that information with the board, and she will present this now.
Thank you. I'm sharing now, and I have the grant access. I'm so sorry. I didn't put public access on it, so I'll get that taken care of shortly. Please let me know if you can see the presentation.
Yeah. Is this, so is this titled the Michigan CLSD grant? Is that how you would? All right, thank.
Okay, so, correct. The I I don't know what they're calling it. We call it MYCLATSE, but it stands for Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. So, you know, we have these nice long names. So, you know, we have these nice long names. So it's just a quick update and overview. And the reason that it's quick is because of the turnaround on this grant, and we are still in the process of understanding the grant. So BJS is a sub-grantee. This grant came through the Michigan Department of Education, which came from the feds. There were only 11 states that were awarded this grant. And Michigan was the only state out of the 11 that decided to implement the grant this year. So that means 2/3 of the grant year is already gone. So we're really, that's why we're really pushing a lot of things through. We have to get these money spent within a certain amount of time to stay on track and stay on pace. We submitted a letter of interest in November. I wrote the application and submitted it by the 14th of December. The award announcement came very late. They were supposed to come in January. It came on March 8th. And then we didn't have our first meeting until the 26th of March. So we've been meeting weekly with different stakeholders on this grant via Michigan Department of Education and getting up to speed. So we are expected to reprogram and use 60% of the grant that, I'm sorry, 100% of the grant by the end of the fiscal year this year, which means we're going to reprogram about 60% of it. They want us to really concentrate on materials and training. We have, we are filling two key positions, the Assistant Director of Literacy and Curriculum, and the Early Childhood Coordinator, which is an instructional facilitator position. Both are very key because this grant covers age 0 to 12th grade. We do not have an age 0 to 3 program, so the Early Childhood Coordinator will be developing that. We do have GSRP, and we do have preschool, so we're going to be looking at the connections there and beefing it up. Again, we are meeting weekly, and we have training sessions with the Great Start Collaborative, which is GSRP, the MTSS, or the Old My Blissie Technical Assistance Center. We meet with the MDE team, and we meet with the Berrien-Risa Literacy Team. So our grant implementation timeline loosely looks like we are trying to get our literacy coaches in place for the elementary, middle school, and high school. And we are required to partner with the Michigan Education Corps, which we are negotiating now, what we would like from them as far as tutoring. We also have a component that we have to develop, which is family engagement. We're using the My Family Framework, and the Great Start Collaborative again will be helping us. So our next steps, we have to develop relevant summer training, which will probably include more than likely the Orton-Gillingham SLD Read Training. We are going to continue to get trained in Destiny and Library Literacy. We have to be trained in Literacy Essentials and Disciplinary Literacy. This is all part of the grant. We're going to order the required materials like digital libraries or the preschool, the PELI, the PELI kits, which is the preschool education literacy indicators, I believe it's an assessment. We are looking to make sure there's a seamless connection between our library and literacy project that was presented last week and our summer reading program, and a seamless integration of Read by Three Law and the Guidelines, installation of a partnership of the 0 to 3 program. That's the end of the presentation. Like I said, there's not a lot to report yet because we're constantly meeting. But please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Are there any questions regarding the grant presentation? All right, hearing now, we'll proceed to new hire staff report H1, Ms. Gill.
Yes, let me just click. Here we go. Submitting for board consideration to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. We have Mitzi Jones, SIS ITI Administrator at Central. And recommended action would be that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education vote to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff. Since there is no vote, should I keep going, or?
I just have a question. Can you clarify the acronym?
Yes, actually, let me just not mingle my words. Student Information System, Information Technology Integration Administrator.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions for her regarding this particular hire? All right, hearing now, you can proceed with separations of employment.
Reason for board consideration, a list of employees whose employment relationship with the district is or will be separated is submitted to the board each month. We have Olivia Capodilupo, who is a teacher in training art. And recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education vote to accept the separation of employment of the aforementioned staff.
Okay, any questions regarding the separation of employment?
Yes, Madam President.
Go ahead.
No, with the teacher and training program, do we pay for testing or anything of that for them to get certified? Or is that at the end? My question, because I want to know, are they giving these certifications or getting these testing and then quitting on the district?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Gill.
So that is a good question, but the short answer is no. And there are actually several stages of the program. I will invite Dr. Shelton to provide a little more in-depth answer. But no, we do have requirements, and just a plain teacher and training program does not necessarily provide the certification yet. When there is some help with their tuition, they are required to contribute to it, and then we do ask for them to stay with the district. I do want to clarify that according to labor laws, we're not necessarily able to enforce somebody staying at the district. We could put other incentives in place, and they are in place. I hope this is helpful. And Dr. Shelton, if you want to add more information, please do.
No, I'm good. I think you said that we were going to be doing a presentation on the TNTs and the TNRs. The TNTs are just teachers in training. The TNRs are the teachers in residency. So those are the ones that actually there's dollars being put into them.
Yes, and we were planning to have that presentation at the next HR committee, and hopefully maybe for the whole board, because I think it's very useful information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If there are no other questions regarding staff report, I believe that was H2, we'll proceed to H3.
H3, we have, do you mind if I skip the intro, if I just read the name?
Yes, ma'am, proceed.
We have Paxton de Blasi, academic interventionist, resigning at the end of the year. And I will read the full report at the, at the vote time, if you allow me to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
And can I proceed with H4?
Were there any questions regarding H3? All right, you can proceed with H.
And H4, we have Anna Gale, who is also a TNT art, and also leaving at the end of the year.
Okay, are there any questions regarding staff report H4? I have just a quick question. So being that we know that these individuals, for example, Anna is leaving June 11, is this a position that's already listed for hire? Or at what point do we list these for re, for hire of new people?
Yes, those positions are already listed for next year, absolutely. We are actually constantly recruiting for open positions because of a possibility of people leaving mid-year. And we already have some names who will be brought up at the next meeting, meaning next month for next year. We have, we're definitely in that recruitment phase.
Thank you. All right. All right, next we have Dr. Shelton with Teaching and Learning, and she has an update on high school events, a presentation.
Thank you. Again, I apologize, you guys. I absolutely hit the wrong link to share, so I'll make sure that that is available to the public. And please let me know if you can see it. Yes?
It's visible.
Okay, great. So I think this was a request from a board member to know what's going on with some of the high school events. Currently, we plan on, unless anything changes, which I don't believe it will, we plan on having a senior prom, and we plan on having a graduation on the field. The committees are meeting, have met and continue to meet. And the senior prom, they have named under the city lights, and we're calling prom, I mean, sorry, graduation, walking the field. So these are the important dates to note. That Saturday, the 20, May 22nd, 7:00 PM, the senior prom will be at the high school in the courtyard. And Friday, June 4th, 6:00 PM, graduation will be on the football field. Every precaution is being taken for both events. For the prom, seniors are allowed to bring dates from other Berrien County schools only. Outdoor setting, antitend test, testing required. And now that the state, we actually put this together before the state just came through last week, and I should say state. The Health Department came through last week with some guidance and providing antitend testing for these events. We are going to stick with the pod concept, but that's something that we've always done, and that is just minimal mixing and mingling, mingling that they will come maybe in groups of four to six, and they stay together pretty much. We are going to enforce all healthy habits of hand sanitizing, hand washing, frequent table wiping, et cetera. And I did put the link to the Berrien County guidance for these outdoor events. And again, I apologize, I will get this link open so anybody can see it. This is what the prom invitation looks like. And we'd like to say thank you to Ms. Logan Sharps and Ms. Gunter, because they spearheaded this committee. Onto senior graduation. We're keeping our kids safe with graduation. Seniors will walk the field. Chairs will be, we will utilize the entire field. They will be placed socially distanced. Parents and families will be socially distanced in the bleachers and probably stay in pods or sections. And actual diplomas delivered on the field. And I know that's kind of a strange thing to put, but in the past, they just come through, they have their names called, and after graduation, they meet up in the courtyard, and they line up, and they get their diplomas and sign for them. We're taking care of all of that ahead of time, because we don't want to create any situation that kids are bunching up together at any time. So the signing off, counselors are going to take care of before graduation. And when the kids get their names called, they're actually going to get their diplomas handed to them. A little bit more update. The high school graduation committee began meeting in March in anticipation that we would be able to have our commencement. Students from both schools, High School and Cape, will participate. On June 1st, there'll be the senior picnic. On June 3rd, there'll be the senior luncheon. And currently, right now, between Benton Harbor High School and Cape, seniors currently on track are 96 students. We have more coming down the pike. We know how seniors get kind of the senioritis, and so now some of them are cramming to get their, the last credit or the last half credit completed. And I'd just like to acknowledge all the people that have been working weekly and continue to work weekly in putting this all together. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam President.
You have the floor, trustee Bones.
I understand, parents have reached out to me. I understand that there is five. How many students do we have graduating, or that is expected to graduate? Because I know parents have been saying they only get five tickets, and they've been hitting me. I don't know about any other board members, but my inbox has been blowing up. So I'm like, is there a way we can extend that, make it, if they all sit on the same bleach, I don't know. But make it, or if you have a family of seven or eight brothers and sisters, and only five can come, that's not a win-win.
Yeah, I do want to say, we're going to try to meet the family's needs as much as possible. There is some specific guidance given out by the State Department. But whatever we can do to meet the needs of our community, we will do. But safety is our number one priority. So if you don't mind, maybe through President Robinson, shoot some specific concerns, so I can address that, probably specifically with those families, or maybe the high school principal, so it can not be an issue. But we don't want to restrict anybody. We want to be safe, and we want to meet everyone's needs. So just, if you don't mind, through President Robinson, give those specifics, and we'll try to get that stuff addressed.
Thank you.
Dr. Chalmers?
Yes, sir.
The capacity for Field Strip Field, the stadium, is, do you know the exact number?
Off the top of my head, I do not. But where are you going with the coach?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I know if there's a a capacity, a certain percentage of people that can actually attend. We do have different guidelines, whether it be in outdoors, are we going to talk about vaccinated people? I don't know if we can go into that degree, or, you know, how, I know it's going to take a lot of work and pre-planning for that to take place. But I'm almost thinking that, that, that stadium holds about 3,500 people. And so what percentage of 3,500, you know, is it only 25%?
I can answer.
Go ahead, Dr. Shelton. Let me just read this real quick. Specific guidance on graduation ceremonies, this is from the Department of Michigan.gov/coronavirus, the information they gave to us as a district. Stadiums, arenas, outdoors, 5,000 fixed seats, up to 1,000 guests.
Yeah.
So that's the fifth, so that's 20%.
Yeah, so if we look at our capacity, because I know you had an opportunity to experience your first graduation last year. And, you know, they just, it's just a big time of the year in Benton Harbor. And, you know, I had to leave because they were, you know, we were really into the COVID piece, and I just started to run them away because they just were not in, 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 in order. But I know it's going to take a lot to plan it. But like I said, I think that, that, that stadium holds about 3,000 people. So if you look at that right there, at the end of percentage with, because the percentage of students, if it's 100 kids, how many tickets can they have? How do you do the actual taping off, or do you do the seating? What sections, you know, I know it's a lot of detail that would, that would go into play. But to try to get as many people, I mean, that's within the guidelines, especially as it relates to family. But they're going to just have to deal with it too, because there's a specific number. And I know that's going to be hard for them, but they're going to have to identify who, out of their five. I mean, if they got five tickets, or they got 10 tickets, or what have you, then, you know, they have to make that hard choice of what 10 people are going to get.
Right, because last year, we didn't do anything. People drove through in a car and took a picture, and that was it. But it's 20%. Again, we're going to, we're going to hit 20%, you know, we're going to follow the guidance and not, we don't want to get cited for anything. And I do recognize it's a big deal in all communities, graduation, and I want to make it as meaningful as possible. We want to make it as meaningful as possible. So I do want to give a major shout out to the team. I mean, I mean, this is 30 days heads up. It's May 4th, prom is on the 22nd, graduation June 4th. So the team has been working very hard. You know, these jobs are thankless, ladies and gentlemen, as anyone listening. Thankless job, hard, difficult jobs, and we all know that leadership is not for the faint of heart. So I do appreciate everyone, including trustee members that are leading with us, because it's very, very difficult work, but it's there for our kids.
Okay, any other questions regarding the events? Go ahead, trustee Rocket.
Where's the senior picnic going to be held? I wasn't anticipating that question, and I will get back with the committee. I know they've been planning it all to make it sure it's socially distanced. So I don't know if that's going to be an inside or outside event, but we can find out.
We can follow whatever.
I appreciate the work that everybody is doing on behalf of the seniors, just to give them a semblance of what it would be like to. Just to give them a semblance of what it would be like to be in a normal situation to graduate. With all of the activities that, you know, that they should be afforded to them. So I appreciate them.
All right, we are going to proceed next to the extended learning plan. And I just want to thank everyone for hanging in there with us this evening. We're almost there. So, Dr. Sheldon, you have the floor.
Okay, so just very quickly, there is no update on the educational progress. Because we are in the middle of testing in W E A, and that's what we will report out on in the June meeting. There's no change in the instructional delivery. And if you just go to the second slide, we have, two weeks worth of data. Because of our board meeting being late last month, we were able to give you all of that data from almost all of, between the end of March and the beginning of April. So by the time we get to next week, we will have this week's data inputted. But that's where we are. And that's it. And I will read the staff report next, next week. And we have submitted to the state our, no change. And that says change, it should say no change, of our educational delivery system. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sheldon. And just clarification for our community members, this is something that we vote to reconfirm, next month. So if you have a public comment that you would like to make regarding this plan, I'm sorry, next week would be the opportunity to do that. Is there any questions from the board at this time regarding the extended learning plan? Hearing none, we will proceed to Mr. Miller with the Concentric Educational Solutions update. And I know my board is tired, because we normally have plenty of questions. So we're almost there. Thank you, everyone. I do appreciate you. Mr. Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, President Robinson. So our update for Concentric Education Solutions, partner for home visits, we have three hundred and thirty-eight students that receive home visits. Four hundred, it was four hundred and six home visits done. One hundred and ninety-six were hard contacts, where they talked to someone. Hundred seventy-nine were soft contacts, where they left a letter at the residence. Thirty-one was no contact. Out of the home visits, the outcomes, the hard contacts, forty-eight percent were hard contact. Forty-four percent were soft contact and eight percent were no contact. And out of the one hundred and ninety-six hard contact outcomes, ninety-eight, they met with a parent or guardian. Fifty-three, they met with a family member. Twenty-two visits, they met students. Nineteen, it was an incorrect address, so they may have met the current resident. And we got that information back to the schools. Four, they met with family, a family friend. And the primary reason for the absences that we had Concentric go out was for wellness checks due to COVID nineteen. That's the end of the update from Concentric.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any current questions for Mr. Miller regarding the Concentric Educational Solutions update?
Yes, Madam President. How long, thank you, sorry. How long is Concentric going to be with us? Is there a timeline when that will be cutting off or?
The last core.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we use them to support us for this academic year only.
Okay, thank you.
Copy.
And we have one more cohort for home visits with Concentric for the rest of the school year.
That was a good question, Trustee Bones. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Miller? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed with the athletic updates.
Thank you. Our girls' basketball team, I'm going to give updates on the end of the winter sports and the start of our spring sports. Our girls' basketball team ended up with a five and six record of this year. They had some key wins. They received the number two seed in the tournament, district tournament this year. That was hosted here at Benton Harbor High School. Unfortunately, our Lady Tigers were not able to participate due to COVID, a COVID case. And they had to quarantine. But each of the past three years, the girls' team has improved as far as participation. And as well as victory. So big ups to our girls' basketball team. Our wrestling program, our Tiger Grapplers, also improved significantly. They won six dual meets and lost seven. In the past two years, the team haven't had enough athletes to even win a dual meet. So good job to the wrestling team. Shout out to them and their program. In addition, Dash Harris Moore had an incredible season, ending up as an all-state, competitor by finishing eighth in the Division Three Tournament. He, his record was twenty-six wins and five losses. Dash, he's a junior and hopes to come back next year with even better results. So shout out to him and the team on their success. Our boys' basketball team, this year had an incredible season. It was, it was fun watching them this past season. They made it to the quarterfinal, round, a game before Breslin. Lost against a tough Grand Rapids Catholic Central, a team that won the state championship. Our Tigers did a great job even in that game against them. They also had an outstanding record of seventeen wins and three losses. The Tigers' leading scorer, scorers, Kentrel Pullian, Chris Moore, Trusell Singleton, and Javon Kai Kendall. On the season. Our spring sports, we have new scoreboards at our baseball and softball fields. That was installed last summer. So that'd be great to see that for this year. Baseball went about four years without a scoreboard. And softball will play their first games this year with the brand new scoreboards. And you will see the new scoreboards are in tiger orange and black, and they look really nice out there on the field. For our baseball team, they have played two games so far. Coach Danny Jennings reported that Sean Sargent, Devin Perkins, Michael Kirby, and Danny Jenkins have been setting a tone this year for our young Tiger squad. Our softball team will play their first game, which was today. Coach Alexander has been working very hard with the young team to prepare. Coach said that Brisha Hill, Deandrea McFall, Madison Collins, Anaya Daniels are leading the way in practice, working really hard and improving each day. And the first game was, they will play at Comstock today, and May thirteenth at home against Bering Springs. And for track, we have our first, had our first meet, on Friday, April thirtieth, at Don Likens at Kalamazoo Lloyd Norx. This week, our Tigers will be traveling to St. Joe for the Rotary Club invite on May seventh, which start at four P M. Leading the team, the girls' team, we have Janesa Wright in the hundred meter dash and four by one hundred. We have beautiful Beecham, three hundred hurdles and the four by two. And our boys' track, we have Marlon Bowman, Bowman, two hundred meters, the four by two and the four by one hundred. And Jakarius McGee, the four by one, the four by two hundred in a long jump. And it's a great day to be a Tiger.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for Mr. Miller regarding the athletic updates?
Yes, Madam President, and I feel like I'm just talking too much tonight. So this is my last question. At our last meeting last month, the former football coach came to the board and, you know, it was all in the newspaper and everything. So my question is, is there going to be an investigation into those allegations?
Yeah, this is Dr. Townsend. I'm going to say no. That caught me off guard and I had an opportunity to address that with the coach. I think it was some personal issues going on. Respectfully, I'm saying all of it respectfully is not to disparage or undermine or miss out. But I had several conversations and this has never come up. I mean, caught me by surprise, caught me off guard. I didn't know what the motive was behind it. But, you know, what we got to do is best for our young people. So, you know, we wish them well. I told them, whatever you need to be successful in the future, don't hesitate to reach out, you know, and, you know, it's all good. So the answer is no.
Thank you.
Copy.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Gail, you turn your camera on for a second. Did you have in something to provide or?
I just wanted to provide for the board, all of those issues have been investigated in the past and resolved. And that was months ago. So we were all very surprised to hear what came up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the athletic updates? All right, anything for old business? I did mention to the board that I checked with our, lead counsel, Mr. Gardner, regarding what it would look like. And what the potential expense would be to the board to have him present for counsel. So I know that I've been pre-messaging, that potentially to you all is something we would discuss, but I want to ensure that I have that information before we have the conversation and know what the, what the financial piece of that would be. So just wanted to re-mention that. I did send that email out on that. And I don't have anything else for old business. Anyone else have anything currently for old business? If not, we'll move forward to new business. Okay, anything for new business from anyone? All right, hearing no new business, we are going to proceed with open public comment. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak. Public comment on agenda items was earlier, and now we are at open public comment. Per policy zero one six seven point three, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration and per our bylaws. No participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz.gillen@bentonharbor@bhas.org. Is there anyone on the line for public comment? Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. It's Anicia Noel. I'd first like to say I appreciate everyone's time in being here. I'd like to start with a quote by a public official. They operate, innocent in private and they attack. Uh, no, 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 I say it wrong, I'm sorry. They operate innocent, in public and they attack in private. And I feel like that speech is true to exactly what's going on because, as we all know, there's a lot of things that play here. It was I who brought up the forty-seven million dollars. Because both WSJM Moody on the Market reported. According to the Macinot report, those funds were one of the main reasons why we received that funding. Was one, it's a breakdown of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents per student. That was one. And that was based off of sixteen hundred students. And yes, indeed, we already did receive the SSR one. And we've already spent two hundred and fifty-five thousand of it. So then, after I saw that report, I then took a look at, the last budgets that have been approved by not, not only this board, but the board before that. And there was major spending in areas that your board memorandum, that is on your board website, on the school district website. It gives a breakdown of what each item is for and what it's supposed to mean. So in your budgets, there's a section that has others. So in the past four years, I want to say prior to COVID, there has not been any major, like overly excessive major spending over the amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, I checked. So in two thousand nineteen, June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, to be approved for the year twenty twenty, there started to be a other section that is starting to show amounts in the, in dollar amounts of two-point million dollars, one-point-six-five million dollars, and one-point-five million dollars. So then my next question is, what is the other section? Your memorandum does not cover it. So if we're going to talk about people operating innocent in public but attacking behind closed doors, we all know that there have been in the past, and I'm pretty sure right now, there are people in sitting positions that are doing exactly what that statement says. And if you're going to peacefully help gentrify us, because I found it uncouth that we sat there and named other community officials with the cornerstone alliance. That was just totally underlined. But that's neither here nor there. So if we're going to truly operate in, under a unified front, we're going to have to be honest and we're going to have to go ahead and address those tough conversations. And we can't keep playing with it. And, and one last thing, because I know my time is up, I must say this. Please, 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 as a Benton Harbor employee, please do not call, contact any more of my family members for my personal contact info. You all have that. Because I am a parent at the district, you have certain means of communication to get in touch with me. I did not like that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noel. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I really appreciate, the, the conversation tonight. I think back to the civil rights movement. I think back to periods of our history where leaders took risks and took a bold stand against what perhaps was popular or political. Like Dr. King, like Fannie Lou Hamer, like Frederick Douglass. Where they faced a tremendous amount of opposition. But when you look back at history and you, you wonder, when you're in a position of authority and you have the power to transform your community, it's so vital to ask, what legacy are you willing to take and create for your people? What side of the line are you going to be on? I'd like to share a quote from Fannie Lou Hamer. We have to build our own power. We have to win every single political office we can. Where we have a majority of Black people. The question for Black people is not, when are the whites going to give us our rights? Or when are they going to give us good education for our children? Or when are they going to give us jobs? If the whites give you anything, just remember, when they get ready, they will take it right back. And it's this time that we, as Black leaders and our Black community, we have to take our rights, our land, our political power, our people, and our communities for ourselves. our people, and our communities for ourselves. Now, this is day 21. And our, for the request for this leadership body to vote yes for the Black Wall Street Zones. Everything I've heard you all talk about, from funding to land, to positions, to programming for our young people, it is all in this program. It's not fractured in onesies, twosies. It's a comprehensive plan. And we do thank you for the discussion and for asking the vital questions. And we ask that you continue this every day until we can achieve the Black Wall Street Zones in our inner city for our families and our students. You all have the power to make history and create a profound legacy in this community. And I'm encouraging you to come together and really consider doing the right thing and putting politics aside, putting our children first.
Ms. Turnbill?
Yes, I just want to say the last five seconds, thank you for your patience. We're holding a press conference in front of the Peace Garden near the flagpole this Friday at 7:00 PM. And we ask you to share our actions and next steps and clarify answers of all the questions brought forth today. And for this powerful body to take bold action and vote yes to move forward for all the things that you say that you're committed to. God bless you and thank you for your earnest leadership.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Bell.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I honestly just want to say thank you to the Board of Education and the superintendent for your partnership basically in sharing and gathering information together. I'm really excited tonight. The Wall Street petition now has over 450 signatures and counting. And speaking to Ms. Rocket's comment on public growth and involvement, we have been present and we're, we're trying to grow public involvement. And I want you to know that we will continue to do so. I'm sorry, I have a kid speaking to me and he comes first. Yeah, go ahead, just a little bit. I'm sorry, thank you. But we'll continue to be here and be not weary and well-doing. We are all doing the work. And I do want to make a point of clarity that we will be asking for a yes vote every day and every meeting until this is passed. We want to be very clear on our intent. And then I also want to ask what Angela said. We do want to extend a warm welcome to our press conference Friday, the 7th at 7 o'clock. And we want to do this at our beloved and unprotected high school. And we will be discussing action steps. We are at day 21. Just, just step up, do the right thing, be present. Also, I do want to make another point. I have been hearing this a lot in the meetings, a lot of separation of employment from our district. And it's interesting to me, I, I was once employed with the district as well. And I just don't remember it being this way. And I want to know what exactly is different that we are losing so many employees? These last past few years, it's been like a mass exodus of our district. And I'm interested in knowing why. And also trustee Bones brought up a point, a question that wasn't answered. And that was a really good question. He asked exactly how many students were graduating. I did see 96 or 95 on the presentation, but I didn't know if that was a projection or the actual number. Everything that the, the teachers are doing to make sure these kids have an amazing senior exit, I think is remarkable. These kids have been through a lot. This community has been through a lot. And I do thank you for your time and just allowing us to be present and speak and communication back and forth. And we look forward to continuing this partnership. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I think you must actually watch the time clock because you always get your comment fully.
I try to. I really try to respect the time. I, I understand. These are long meetings and it's not about me. It's about us. And as much as we can get in from each other, I respect that and I'm trying to honor that. So thank you for the, the time to even speak. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Next, we have Ms. Marian Triplet.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, thank you so much. First, I'd like to applaud your stamina and your perseverance in your board meetings. There's a lot of important information that is being discussed and it's important for the community to have an opportunity to hear as it occurs. So I definitely appreciate that. I have two questions. The first one is a follow-up about the Graduation Alliance program that was presented. And I noticed that it had sections for youth who may be court-involved and then pregnant mothers and parents. And so I just wanted to know about the youth's self-determination ability in these programs. Were, were the youth and their parent or guardian be able to select in or choose in or request as opposed to probation officers ordering or suggesting them in? You know, is it going to be based on an academic and kind of student need referral to that program? Are there going to be other entities kind of weighing in? And with regard to, obviously, if we're talking about expectant mothers, those are females. But regarding parents, is that going to be equitable between male and female students? So that fathers, young fathers, have the opportunity if it provides supportive services and not just female only? And then our special education service is going to be available in that program. If students are eligible, they won't lose their access to that by transferring into that program. My second question is about concentric education solutions. And I just wondered if there's any data, are there any of these repeat visits to students? Where they visited them earlier and now they're coming back and having to visit again? And then are there any secondary referrals? I saw that list of issues that they found in the visits. What kind of secondary or tertiary referrals are being made either internally to other departments in the school system or to our human service agencies? And then finally, you know, this term stakeholder has kind of morphed into something else. Stakeholder, both sides should have an equal responsibility and equal investment in each other. You know, you can't have million-dollar entities being a stakeholder and, and your part continue to struggle. You can't have multi-million-dollar organizations and no reinvestment back into the school district. So I would just suggest that and hope that you all are vetting who are your stakeholders. Their investment in you and, and their need for you as a school district should be the same as your needing their support. It can't be imbalanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Triplet. I don't see any other hands for public comment. So we will proceed with the agenda. And, and thank you to everyone that made public comment this evening. Next on our agenda, we have superintendent announcements and comments. Dr. Townsend.
All right, here we go. My computer just froze up. Give me one second, Sam. I'll be brief with mine. Now, first, I want to acknowledge teachers for teacher appreciation week. We do understand that this has been a tough year during the pandemic, but our teachers have stuck it out. So we appreciate you. I'm asking everyone in the community or anyone who can hear my voice to do something nice for a teacher this week, to show your appreciation as they support our young people during this pandemic. I wanted to share that my mentality at all times is to just get better in every aspect of our education system. I don't care if it's 1% better. So you know, the goal is to be better than we were yesterday, be better than we were last month, be better than we were last year, be better than we were the last decade. That's the goal. I often talk about setting the bar, meeting the bar, exceeding the bar, enraging the bar. And I'm very excited to work with this Board of Trustees team so we can do that for our young people. Everybody, we're in the home stretch of the semester. It's May 4th. As we saw for our seniors, graduation is on June 4th. Our prom is on May 22nd. We hope that everyone is looking forward to the end of the year activities. We hope that all of our students in the district finish this academic year strongly. We will be communicating very soon about what our summer programming will look like. We hope to have all of our young people engaged in summer opportunities, summer enrichment, summer programming. We'll communicate how we're working with local stakeholders such as the Boys and Girls Club, the things that we can do to ensure our young people have something constructive to do during the summer. And I want to give a brief update with regards to COVID-19. Every week, we sit in on the Barien County Health Department updates and our district nurse, Nurse Gable, always provide us with updates. But just to keep this fresh, Barien County continues to trend downward. The county decline has been over the last 14 days. The percent of positivity is between 10 and 12%. And hospitalizations are down and testing in our areas flat, neither up nor down. So I would like to commend the residents of Barien County and Benton Harbor area schools for doing their part in maintaining safety as our number one priority. That concludes my comments. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We are going to move forward to board member announcements and comments. We're going to start with trustee Buchanan. If she's still on the line. Trustee Buchanan, we may have lost her. I don't see her phone. Okay, she's no longer on the line. So we will move forward to trustee Bowens announcements and comments. Trustee Bowens, if you're speaking, you're muted.
Okay, sorry, I'm just speaking away. Didn't even know it. The last, good evening. I'm not going to be before you very long. We had an interesting town hall with the State Board of Education members from the Michigan State Board and it was enlightening. It was educating. And you know, one thing that they talked about that helps districts like Benton Harbor is equitable funding. And that's one thing that we need to lobby our state legislators, Pauline Wenzel and Kim Lasada. She's having a town hall next week in St. Joe. Me and my team will be there. I encourage you guys to get out there and lobby. They need to hear from us. We also had Jane Elliott. I mean, if you know who Jane Elliott is, she is like a grandma, but she tells it how it is. And it was empowering. We had over 60 people and we left inspired. My thoughts and prayers go out to you, Superintendent Townsend and your family and to our community. We may not agree on everything, but when something happens to Benton Harbor, we stick together. We're like that family. We might fight each other, but you don't let nobody else fight, you know, them. Or we stick together and that's what it's all about in this community. It's that community vibe. So you know, we may have disagreements and some may have hatred, but we got to keep going. Last week, I talked about if you hear the dogs barking, keep going. Sometimes the dogs are going to bark, but they never bite. Have a good one and God bless you all. Dogs? Dogs was a quote I, oh, sorry, Dr. DeShana.
Okay, thank you so much, trustee Bowens. Next, we have trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes, first, I'd like to wish all of the teachers a happy teacher week. I hope you receive everything that your heart desires in your classroom with your students. And I, I hope your, the rest of your, your weeks will be just as profitable and, and happy for you. You are appreciated. I understand. I've been in that position, in those positions. And so I understand what it is like to be a classroom teacher. And my hats go off to you. You work hard, you work long hours, and your dedication is appreciated. We may not be able to pay you in bucks, but we will pay you with respect. I thank you. I also would like to say to Dr. Townsend, I appreciate your effort in bringing the new ideas and new programs that you have experienced and that you've experienced and you have the data to show that they work in turning students around. We have been losing students in Benton Harbor and things have not been going very well with our students. We lose a lot to, to the shootings and to the, the justice system. And so if you can, this is my opinion, if you can bring something new and innovative, and people may say, well, it's not new, it's not innovative and it costs too much. But what better way to spend your money than to spend it directly on the kids that you serve? The money should go to the children in any way possible that we can direct those funds for their services and for the good of them and for their education and their well-being. So be it. It could, even if it costs a million dollars, if it goes directly to benefit the kids in our community, I'm for it. And so you've got the, you've told us about the data. Perhaps you could provide more. And you've experienced from talking, hearing you talk, that you, that the programs that you are suggesting will help turn our, our students around and help, help our community and help our students. And so with that being said, I appreciate the new ideas. I appreciate the thoughts that you have for our kids, that you want to help them and that, that we want them to be successful. We'll find the money. We can write grants. We can do a lot of things, but money is out there to be found. If we have to, we can write Oprah Winfrey, you know, or Bill Gates or whatever. But if it benefits our kids, it's well worth the effort and I'm for our students in every way. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rocket Martin. Next, we have treasurer Quayton.
Thank you so much. I want to first thank trustee Martin, Rocket Martin, for that introduction, if you will. It's like she was reading and speaking from my heart. And so I'm very grateful for that. Also, you know, I haven't been feeling well for the last couple of days. You know, it's a lot going on in our community. And it's very difficult, you know, to sift through sometimes your thoughts, feelings, and emotions. But I would like to apologize to my board. I did purchase books before agreements. And I've been reading the book, but Liz was absent from the district. And you know, I forgot to drop them off and to coordinate with someone else. But I do have them in my car and I promised to drop them off. But from the four agreements, the four agreements are to be impeccable with your words. Don't take anything personally. Don't make assumptions and to always do your best. And you know, again, I'm committed to that. I think tonight, our board showed that we're trying to do this. This is something that is not always easy, but in a way to be personally free, which is a mission, I think, of the book, you know, to be personally free. But being personally free does not mean, you know, being out of order. And so I'm just thankful and grateful that, you know, we are committed to being lifelong learners. I was talking to someone as we were kind of unpacking some things that, that perspired at the last board meeting. And a major takeaway for me And a major takeaway for me was to focus on the method and not always the message. And so I think sometimes as we're, or I'm, you know, trying to get my point across, it's never my intention to be inappropriate or to be disrespectful. So I just want to continue to publicly commit myself to living by and using these Four Agreements to be an effective communicator on and off, on the board and also away from the board table. And also, I would like to thank all of the teachers across the country, but most specifically in Benton Harbor area schools for being committed and to doing their very best for our students in this community in spite of all of the things that are working against us. And so I'm so grateful. I know that, you know, our test scores and our data might not show all of the hard work that you are putting in, the countless hours. But I would like to publicly thank you for doing your very best, and I am grateful. And I hope that in the very near future, as we are, like I think Ms. Rocket Martin stated, looking for other programs, you know, let's look into some things that will support teaching and learning specifically, you know, to help the teachers so that they can get better, so that our students can get better and to have more opportunities. And so in lieu of Teacher Appreciation Day and Week, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, teaching and teachers are dear to my heart, as that has been my lifelong career. And also, I just wanted to thank all of the staff and individuals for providing information and being patient. You know, you guys are learning. We're learning as a board. And many of us wear different hats. Personally, you know, I worked in education for about 15 years, and now I've been self-employed for almost five, four times. And sometimes, you know, we forget, you know, what it takes to be on the other side of the table. And then some of us don't really understand the backgrounds that everyone has and the experience. And so I think it's important that we continue to show respect and deference to people in individual positions and continue to do what's best for Benton Harbor. I'm not interested in doing what's best for adults, self-included. My whole entire life, now as a parent, is committed to doing what's best for my own personal children. And so on this board, it is my mission to do what is best for the students of Benton Harbor and the greater Benton Harbor area schools. And so I'm just, I just wanted to say that publicly. And so I think like my colleague stated before, Trustee Bowens, Trustee Rocket Martin stated before, we're here to do our very best, and even if we don't personally agree, you know, there's a professional imperative that must take place. And so I'm just grateful of the growth and the gains. And, you know, sometimes you might experience growing pains, but I think, you know, we will all be able to stand tall in a peaceful way as our group. I really enjoyed the young lady. I think her name was Angela from representing the Black Wall Street. But I enjoyed the whole committee and that presentation. And so, you know, I do like many of the things that were presented. And I'm looking forward to, in the very near future, being able to vote on that and to support that resolution or to at least get more information about that. So thank you so much for bearing with me. Continue to support and encourage. Show up. Your voices matter to us. And, you know, we appreciate everyone for coming and having the courage to, you know, publicly state opinions and ideas without, you know, taking things personal and creating any kind of conflict. And so I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Next, we have Secretary Triplett.
Evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Tonight has been a pretty tough night for me. While we were on the meeting, I got a call that my uncle passed. Many of you all know Gwen Willis, who sings in our community. Her father, Clarence Willis, just passed this evening. I was thinking, you know, yesterday, Shamika Jordan passed, and I was her second grade teacher at the Academic Academy. And I was her class advisor, class of 2000. Mark got killed. Nicole, his mother, was one of my kids. The Bard School Program. And the young man that killed him was one of my former students. And I was his mother's fifth grade teacher. To say the least, one thing that I know without a shadow of a doubt, that I've never wavered in my commitment to Benton Harbor area schools and to the children of Benton Harbor. And I've in my four months on this Board of Education, I've learned a lot. And I'm still learning. I, I, I understand what I taught forever. The true meaning of to whom much is given, much is required. And it sounds like cliche words. But it is really, it's real. You know, I say the little thing, I'm not new to this. I am truly true to this. I never thought in a million years that I would be on the Board of Education. That was not a part of my goals when I set my goals as a young man, having had the opportunity to see Benton Harbor at its best. I just want to say to the Board of Education to be encouraged and to take care of yourself in this work. This has really been tough. And I don't want anybody to think that anything that I say or do is personally towards you. It has been always been a part of me that I will inspect what I expect. And so to the citizens of Benton Harbor, you should always be welcome here. When I ran for this Board of Education, I didn't run for this Board of Education with a hidden agenda. Didn't have anything set on my mind to do. It took a lot of thought, permission, conversations with my wife, was this something that I really, really want to do? And so I'm clearing my resolve. I don't play games. Never have and never will. And I am a tiger. And I want to fight for these kids like I've done all of my life until the day I die. And so I want to encourage the, the teachers and tell them, like Ms. Rocket said, I sit at that desk. That's a sacred desk. And I appreciate you, not just in Teacher Appreciation Week. I appreciate you every day because I know the sacrifices that many of you all have made as far as your wages and everything and what you give and what you've given up to central administration. I am praying for you, and I am hoping that whatever plans you have for us that Benton Harbor area schools is successful. I want to thank you for this opportunity to, Ms. Cabin. Stay on the wall. If it's in your heart and it was given to you, don't ever give up the fight. Keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Next, we have Vice President Bradley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to be quick as possible because I do value everyone's time. First, I do want to say, I want to thank the teachers. You are all appreciated. I did take Teachers Cadet back in my high school days with Ms. McQuillan down at Tech Center when Ms. Carol Fecky was running the Tech Center. And I did want to go to school to be a teacher. Life, you know, has a way of changing, and I ended up going into the transportation industry. And then I ended up still becoming an over-the-road trainer and training, I think I've trained about 10, 10 drivers, maybe less than that, maybe more. And so I guess, you know, life has a way of finding your calling. Let me see, I got a few notes. Change is hard, and it's a process. It's hard changing old mindsets, and it's hard doing new things and trying new things, and that's okay. And so where, where do we find a compromise? Where do we find a middle ground to combat those changes? Heard a lot of good things, you know, you know, in the meeting. Happy to see that the turnover is, the turnover presentation. Then another thing I want to say is we have to get united as a community. And in that, we also, I've heard other people say it also tonight, we can't be attacking each other. We can't be belittling each other. We have to get behind each other. That starts on every level of the community, in our churches, block clubs, schools, wherever. We have to come together. We can do all types of vision and programs, but we have to come together. You know, right now, our community, we are experiencing shootings, fires, crossfires, near misses. We had a near miss at my home. My mother, a bullet went through my mom's bedroom wall last week, and, you know, that was a scary experience for all of us. So we have to find a common ground. We have to find something to come together. We can, we can do all the programs all day long, but we're going to have to unite as a community. When I first ran for this, I'm going to make this quick. When I first ran for the school board, it's something, it's always something to be on that other side of the table. And, you know, seeing stuff in the newspaper, in the media, hearing stuff on the streets. But when you get on the other side of the table, it's a different process. You're not just making decisions for your own feelings, but you're also making decisions that could impact the community for a lifetime. And so now what we're doing now is we have to make sure that we make decisions and then we also make them for the children of the future, but we can't focus on the past mistakes. The past is the past. Things have happened, but we got to keep on going. And it's going to be a marathon, if not a sprint. Some things we can sprint towards, but some things we're going to have to do a marathon on. You all have a good evening and stay blessed, and that's all I have for the evening.
Thank you, Vice President Bradley. So I'm going to be truly brief. Just want to say again, Happy National Teacher Appreciation Day to all of our educators that are here working hard in our district, as well as those tigers who have graduated and are giving their efforts in other districts. Just want to give my heart out to those family members who are mourning currently in the community, those who have been impacted by COVID and natural loss and violence. It's just a lot of sadness and grief that has taken place in our community. So my heart goes out to you. I want to thank my board for a good meeting, working effectively this evening. Even though we went long, we were still able to have a pleasant and productive meeting. And so I just want to thank each of you for your efforts. I thank our executive team for their diligence and the community members who have remained on the line with us this evening for being committed enough to stay here with us through the entirety of our presentation in our board meeting. So I just appreciate everyone who is committed to the uplift of our district, and I thank you all. Only announcement I have is today is my daughter's 10th birthday. And so while I have been meeting with you all, she was with her father in South Bend celebrating her birthday. So I am committed 100% to this district and this board, even in a manner that causes me to miss out on some of the most special moments of our lives. But I thank you all for being here with me and for making it a pleasant experience this evening. So I have nothing else to add. That's all that I wanted to speak to this evening. And thank you all for the Black Wall Street presentation. I didn't, I attended that and enjoyed it. I am going to wrap up this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion that be adjourned this meeting?
Okay, the most, okay, the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by Trustee Bowens. Any questions, comments, or concerns, or reasons why we should not? Hearing none, Secretary Triplett, can you please follow the role for adjournment?
Madam President, the motion was made by everybody on the boards. I heard seven voices, six voices, and I was speaking silently.
I think it, I'm pretty sure Dr. Townsend put in a motion himself.
Okay, President Robinson?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yeah.
Secretary Triplett, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan? Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, the motion has.
Y'all have a good evening?
Yes, for adjournment of the meeting, I call this meeting to end or adjournment at 10:19 PM officially. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.